Present.
I'm gonna take George Corn out of that one.
Yeah, we are.
Yeah, fix that.
Yes, it was unanimous.
He was with us in spirit.
There you go.
We look a little bit like.
Okay, well, how about a motion on the, I think the original motion was just a public or was it non-public also?
Correct. I said that.
How about a motion on the non-public with those.
So moved.
Second.
Slide corrections. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, extensions. You? Uh, solar energy update?
Did Rick Russell wanna be here?
It was he planning on coming in? Okay, then we'll, we'll hold off on that. Registration refund, did you, Phil, was it, can you give us an update on that?
Yeah, I, I spoke to Tammy and I don't really see how we can do this without setting a bad precedent because she deals with a lot of people who register their car and then the next day come in and want a refund because they got in an accident or the engine blew or something like that. So unfortunately, I, I sympathize with the person who is requesting the, the refund, but I don't think that we can grant that without setting a precedent that allows a loophole for people to get management, so.
Okay. Any other discussion? I, I think we, we made a prior decision to not.
Right. I was just following up to make sure.
Yep.
She had sent a letter clarifying some of the questions, so I wanted to follow up, so.
So you can let her know that we reconsidered it and our position doesn't change. Thank you. Appointments are to the historical museum committee? Did we? Let me see. Uh, in keeping with our recently recent change on interviewing our appointments, uh, do you wanna have these?
We didn't try to, we didn't wanna try to squeeze them in tonight. If you wanna wait until they come in, you can, or you can sign them, uh, so they can get started and talk to them at the next meeting.
Uh, here's a note from Ruth Albitz to the Kingston Selectmen. Does everybody have it? I'd like to have Kathy Chase reinstated to the Kingston Historical Museum Committee. Also, we would like Walt Roy to be appointed to our committee to replace Stacy Smoyer, who doesn't wanna be on the committee any longer. Ruth Albitz. So it, it looks like a three-year appointment for Catherine Chase and three years for Walter Roy. In the past, we've, we've, at least recently, recent, we've, uh, adopted meeting, uh, any potential appointees and just have a little dialogue with them. Uh, how, how do you wanna proceed?
Okay, I think that's been effective to just.
Okay. Everybody agree? Could you ask them to come in? You? Uh, I got another request for Budget Committee member, Kim Donahue. There's a letter from her to the Officer Leckman. The outgoing chair of the Budget Committee, Ling Genti, has suggested I send this letter. I am writing to express my interest in joining the Budget Committee. My understanding is that there are several openings. I believe my experience will assist with the proper budget assessment. My skills in business recommend will allow me to be a valuable addition to this committee. I have held executive level roles for several years and have had budget responsibilities in all of them. Currently, I am an Assistant Vice President and Officer at a large financial services company in Cockin, New Hampshire. In my role, I oversee ten teams and several budget, budgets and initiatives. I have strong interpersonal skills and the ability to make sound decisions based on the exploration of facts. I also understand budget constraints and challenges. I'm confident in my ability to make decisions which are in the best interest of Kingston and its residents. I have lived in Kingston since two thousand seventeen. In a short time, I found myself connected to the town based on the sense of community it has. I put down roots here and feel very much at home, invested in our town. I just volunteered on the Kingston Three Hundred and Twenty-Fifth Committee and plan on continuing with the Kingston Days Committee. I respectfully ask for your consideration.
What I would say is, um, liaison to the Budget Committee, there's actually a lot of different, I believe there's up to four openings on that, um, committee. And it's a very important committee. This, the hard part with that committee is it lost a lot of the history, the people that have been on there for a long time. I don't know who would be willing to step up. Is Chairman on that committee? I know there's been.
I think they have a chair, don't they?
Yeah.
It's not interested in being chair. It's the vice chair, um, that is acting chair and she's not interested in being chair. And I think we just posted this, uh, saying that anyone interests. I think, to be honest, we should take in all the applicants, people that are interested in it. I think we should forward it to the acting chair and that committee should meet and at least discuss it and then come back.
Who's the acting chair?
Mary Fiddler.
Mary Fiddler. But everyone that's on that committee hasn't been on longer than two, two, three years?
Axel Prophet say he was interested in.
He's interested in, yes. But the, the, the committee hasn't met, so they haven't elected a chair.
Oh, I thought he volunteered, okay.
No, he's interested in it. Um, but it, the committee hasn't met. I think the committee should, me, review the applicants and then decide how it wants to go from there. But I would urge people, if anyone's interested, especially task members, because there's no history. Everyone on there is fairly only less than two years on there.
So how do you wanna proceed? Would you like her to come in and see us with the other appointees or?
I, I think I should wait till the committee itself should look at all the applicants and then decide what they wanna do personally. I think the committee should decide.
They don't have a date to meet yet, do they?
No, they don't.
That makes sense.
Okay. So why don't we?
I'll reach out to.
Forward this letter to, uh, the rest of the, the Budget Committee?
Yeah, and I would again urge the viewing audience, if anyone's interested in serving on the municipal Budget Committee, to send a letter of, um, intent addressed to the acting chair or to Executive Assistant Susan.
Okay. Since this is twenty-five up, I'd like to open the public hearing, uh, scheduled for seven-thirty, um, on the Vintage Bazaar, uh, which is an event proposed for the Plains. Come on up. Why don't you just introduce yourselves, explain to the public and, and all the, uh, the audience what, uh, what you're looking to do?
Absolutely. So my name is Devin Shinar. I'm the founder and director of the Vintage Bazaar. Um, I've been doing it for quite some time. I started in two thousand eleven. It's all over Massachusetts, wherever it seems. This is to be approved. This will be like twenty-fifth show, whatever it does still costs like a three or a significant amount of time. Um.
It's not in my schedule, it's not in your.
Thank you, Phil.
Does that sound better?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and my brought here with me is Lynn Coolen, and Lynn is not only a Kingston resident. Say that again. Is that better? Okay. I'm still new.
You can take it off if you want.
Now I feel like I'm in karaoke.
You don't do much karaoke.
That's what I don't get about your karaoke. Perfect, that's better. Okay. Um, so I did bring with me, uh, an associate of mine. Her name is Lynn Coolen. She's a Kingston resident and also has been a vendor of ours at several shows over the years. So I wanted to bring somebody in as well, just so you could see it from a vendor standpoint and take someone else's word for it, not just mine. Um, but what I'm looking to do is put on a fall festival here, October fifth and sixth, um, using the Kingston Plains. What the Vintage Bazaar is, if you're not familiar, is it's a, uh, antique show and a craft show. Um, it's typically held, uh, it started off being two, two times a year and now we're up to four times a year, uh, twice indoors and twice outdoors. Um, in addition to vendors, there's live music and food trucks. The hours of operations are on Saturday, it goes from eight-thirty in the morning till four o'clock in the afternoon. And on Sunday, it goes from ten o'clock in the morning to four o'clock in the afternoon. So it doesn't go too late into the evening. Um, as far as staffing is concerned and parking issue, and how the parking would be done, um, if granted permission, we'd be using, uh, one, possibly two of the sections. The rest would be for parking with overflow parking, um, at the baking school, the seminary school, and then a third backup for the high school. I did put in a request, uh, with the state of New Hampshire to u- utilize the field that is, um, the entrance point off to the left of the state park. So we could be utilizing that before using the school, um, parking lots for overflow parking. I carry a staff of at least sixteen parkers, so they would be onsite, road vests, flags, radios, assisting, parking. Um, our goal is to, is always has been, is to get cars off the street as quickly as possible in a safe manner. As far as, uh, vendors setting up, they, they, they come a day and a half early to start their setup. Uh, their setup's usually, it's a ten by ten spot and they set it up almost like an outdoor boutique, I guess, so to speak, uh, where they sell their wares for the, the two days. Vendors are from New Hampshire, Maine, Massachusetts, throughout, actually throughout the country. Have some that, that have, that come from Florida or, uh, California and they, they, they come out here and, and do these shows. Um, so that's pretty much it in a nutshell as far as how that would work. We would, I have worked with this, um, with Chief Briggs and Chief Seaman on as as far as what we would need for, uh, service details. So there would be police presence, um, they would be in onsite. I'd privately rent uh, or I guess rent would be the right word, but privately contract out an ambulance service, um, so we wouldn't be using the towns, uh, firemen or EMS. Uh, I did get quotes on that, so I do have that available. They got back in touch with me. Um, at my last meeting, I hadn't heard from them yet, so I do have the quotes for that. Um, porta potties, we use a local company, I believe out of Plastow, um, that they bring in the porta potties. They service them throughout the festival. Well, we have an attendant that, that, that takes care of them and then every, on that Saturday evening, they'd be, the porta potties get cleaned out, so they're fresh for the next day. Those, those would be taken off-site by Monday morning. Um, as far as trash, we're pretty much sticklers when it comes to trash service. Uh, there's barrels in groups of three to four that will be scattered throughout the event with a designated trash, uh, usually one to two staff members full-time will, will go through and make sure the trash is being taken care of with an onsite, onsite dumpster that would be utilized until Monday afternoon. Um, when the festival ends at four, the vendors pack up, um, their wares, ninety percent of them are off the field by that evening. The rest might come back first thing Monday morning to grab their, their tent or, or tables or things like that that they couldn't fit in their vehicle. And then our cleanup crew goes through and cleans up all of the trash. Um, our rule of thumb is if it's bigger than my fingernail, you pick it up. So it's, uh, we try to leave, uh, no footprints after we've, we've left. Uh, as far as how the, would be contained, um, we use, it looks like agricultural fencing that just kinda fences in the property itself where the vendors are set up. And, um, from a parking standpoint, we use ropes and stakes to make lines of sight for, for parking. Think I've covered just about everything? Let me just take a quick peek.
All set?
I think so. I mean, I wanted to let everybody know that as far as the food vendors, they are just strictly food vendors. There is no alcohol being served, um, beer, wine, things like that. We have done that in the past, but given the time constraints and this being our first time here, we didn't wanna introduce that, so, um, there is none of that. Uh, as far as parking, that how it could affect the neighbors, um, we'd be happy to put up no parking signs in front of particular residences, but generally speaking, when they see our, when the, the public that attends see our parking staff, they wanna go where we, where we tell them to park, so. Um, but we would, I, we would certainly be willing to put out no parking in front of residents' homes as well.
Okay, thank you. Before we open it up for public comment, since this is a public, um, hearing, I'd like to le- uh, read into the record one letter that we received at, uh, or email at our office. It says, "My husband and I are writing to say thank you so much for the opportunity to voice our feedback regarding the proposed Vintage Bazaar. We live at one-twenty-three Main Street. We will not make it to the meeting on the twenty-sixth, but wanted to send our support in favor of this event. While we both agree the week-long Kingston Days was too much for the neighbors, we truly enjoy weekend events that bring the community together and support small businesses and vendors. If approved, we will definitely be spending time at the bazaar. Thank you again for considering the neighbors and offering an opportunity for feedback. Sincerely, Jamie and Ashley Page." Is there anybody from the public that wish to speak to this?
Hi, go ahead.
You're gonna have to come up to, uh, the microphone. Could you please identify yourself for the record?
I am Tamara Harmer and I live at one-forty-nine Main Street, directly across from the fire department. I second what the people in the letter say. I just wanted to come and say how much I appreciate that you would even think of us and send a letter and ask how we feel about it, um, and that we feel that this is a, a treasure, having the plains out there. And that we are able to share it with everyone and, and get out and feel the sense of community. It's really special. And, um, it's fun to live right there and be able to just open the door and go, oh, look, there's something happening today and step outside. So we appreciate you doing it all and all the work that you are doing for us. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else wish to make a comment? Yes, sir.
Dan Doyle, one, one fifty-six Main Street. Uh, quick question. Is there gonna be an admission charge to go into this event or is it open? Um, next question.
You're gonna have to give her the phone, the microphone for her to respond. Thanks, Dan.
There is typically, there is an admission fee and usually how, when, at any of the, um, festivals we've done, that would be comparable to this. We usually give out, uh, free passes to the surrounding abutters is usually how that works.
That would be nice, since they're always parking in my front yard. Uh, the next question is, is, um, I, I encourage it. I wish there was something going on out there every weekend, quite honestly, and I support this. Uh, one of the things that we always have an issue with, such as the bonfire in Kingston Days, is, um, they're very good about policing the trash that's in the plains, but no one considers the homeowners on the other side of the street when trash is blowing into their yard or people park along the road and leave their bottles or cans in our front yards. Is there a way we can, who's ever doing the, the trash pickup, at least maybe hit the front yards of the homes around the plains? That way we don't have to go out there and, and do it every evening?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, in the past, the other thing I could comparatively speak it to is one of the venues we had, there were abutters nearby or across the street. Um, and that's part of it's, it's, there's a full-time s- person that goes around and does trash throughout the day. So not only they do that, but they're, they would be looking throughout the parking areas and across the streets during the, during the festival and definitely afterwards. Um, our goal was to, would be to have everything cleaned up by Monday. Um, that's weather dependent. Of course, we come back through on Tuesday and make sure we've gotten every last bit, but.
Any other questions, comments? Lynn?
Our forefathers were forward-thinking by setting aside the land known as the plains for townspeople to gather. And gather they have. From the carnivals and bonfires of the past, sled dog races of the past, to Kingston Days tee-ball and soccer of today, everyone's been gathering on the plains. In the nineteen nineties, to save money, the selectmen stopped regular mowing and care of the plains. The grass grew to twelve, uh, eight, twelve to eighteen or so inches before the three or four times a year that the mowing occurred. This left the grass in very poor condition. It was further damaged by football cleats from pop water games. Everyone in town is talking about the deteriorating look of the town. The town looked very unkempt at the time. When Richard Saint-Hilaire was elected, he and his crew began addressing the problem. It took years and a lot of hard work, but our plains have been restored. Grass has been seeded, organically fertilized, trees planted, and benches added. The bandstand was recently big rebuilt. The centerpiece of our town and the pride of our community is back. I work at the Merrill Bartlett Group, a business that overlooks the plains. Every day, we see people walking, jogging, and children playing. Yesterday, a woman was enjoying the day, sitting in a beach chair, reading a book. The plains are very well-used and very well-appreciated. I have the pleasure of introducing many prospective homebuyers to Kingston. It's the plains that sets Kingston apart from other towns. When buyers come to my office, they see a Kingston that has a sense of community, a community they would like to join. This year, Kingston held two major events. Did this cause a little inconvenience? Sure. But what's a little inconvenience when you see the joy people were feeling? The night of the bonfire, I didn't see a person that wasn't smiling. Pedestrian traffic was continuous. People and families of all ages pushed baby carriages and wheelchairs. Kids rode on skateboards, bicycles, and parents' shoulders. Everyone was happy, especially the adults that were a little buzzed from the beer fest. At the parade, the philharmonic, and the light show, the fun compensated for the inconvenience. But it might not compensate for the inconvenience if it happens too frequently. I believe the plains are a town's gathering pla- space, and so do the townspeople who attended Envision Kingston Two. They wanted more activities on the plains. Almost done, guys. For Kingston residents, what if we added children's summer movies and band concerts, they thought? The activities this summer not only celebrated Kingston's three hundred and twenty-fifth anniversary, but they also benefited many town, civic, and charitable organizations, helping to support our community. And because these organizations were local, they took pride in not only the activities they presented, but also in the appearance of the plains. The three-twenty-fifth anniversary committee, like the Kingston Days Committee and the Bonfire Committee, constantly emptied trash cans, picked up trash, and made sure the porta, porta potty company kept the facilities clean. Youth selectmen have the responsibility of deciding who will use the plains. If this resource is overused, it will destroy the work Richard and his crew have done over the years to bring back the plains. I would recommend that the town continue activities on the plains that are limited in scope and provided by local civic, town, and community groups. But I don't see the need for a lot of outside groups that do not benefit our community using this important town resource. Thank you.
I'm William Bartlett. I live at one-fifty-three Main Street. I have a couple of questions. Is this a private corporation or charitable organization?
No, it's a pri- it's a privately owned, I, it's how I support my, my fam- it's private, yeah, it's how I support my family.
This is a private commercial organization. Now, my question would be not for you, but of the selectmen. Are we going to have one outfit, one commercial outfit? Are we gonna set a precedence by doing this? All commercial people to use the plains for whatever program they have? And this must be serious because we could wind up with, if it's successful, we could wind up with a show there every week. And previously, we've used the plains for charitable organizations. I spent a lot of time there, and I'm concerned that of all the work that Richard has done to make the plains acceptable, to open it up to commercial use, would certainly not be beneficial to the town of Kingston. Well, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions?
I'm Lynn Coolen. I live on Bartlett Street in here in Kingston. And as Devin said, I've been a vendor for many, many of her shows and as you can see by hearing her telling all the details, she's extremely detail-oriented, very organized. And it's just a very wonderful, family-friendly fall festival. Um, a lot of people still ask me about the Junior Women's League with their craft and antique fair, and I would liken it to that. The same kind of an atmosphere where it's something fun for a lot of people to attend and I feel like the selectmen are keeping it under control by doing just what they're doing tonight, um, having the hearings and letting people decide pretty much what they wanna say about it. So. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anybody else? Speaking, just speaking briefly to that and some of the discussions that the board has had in the past, yes, we're concerned about commercial uses on the property. Um, we do charge a fee. It's, I believe it's twenty-five hundred dollars, uh, for the use of it. Uh, every, any applications that we do receive that we, uh, scrutinize very closely. Um, again, I, I think we'd like the, liken this to the, um, similar to the craft fair that used to be out there. Um, it seemed like a lot of residents really appreciated that. I know in the past where, where we'd have the farmer's market, um, on occasion. Um, so, yes, is it, is it a, uh, commercial venture? I, I guess it is, um, but I don't think it has the commercial feel to it. Any other comments?
I, I think this event is something that we're probably gonna have to get used to as the new normal is, there's a volunteerism problem across America today, and with the three-twenty-fifth, we had some great volunteers, but there were definitely some huge holes there um, that had to be made up through other means. And I, I, I think this is an event that showcases Kingston. You know, it's, it is similar to a not-for-profit event, and we've been open to not-for-profits coming in there, but I think this is an event that's fun for the town. All the, all the residents of town can enjoy this event, and it's at no cost either volunteer-wise or monetary-wise for the town. So, a- and I, I see it as low impact. I also don't think, you know, I think it's worth seeing how it works one time, and if it's a complete disaster, and I don't think it will be, I think you have a good plan, but I, I, I think we can reassess from there, but I also think i- it, it looks like a solid, fun event that everybody in the town can enjoy, and if it, you know, we can assess after the fact if it does have detrimental effect to the, to the plains. So that's my thought on it. It's definitely, you know, do this one time and, and see where we are.
Anything else?
I'll just say that I supported this two weeks ago, and we decided to go public with it, with the letters go out. I've had a lot of comments from the public supporting it. They think the plains should be used more often. The selectmen did recognize the fact that we don't have a good policy in place for the use of the plains, and I hope we'll start working on that in the future, but I support this fully.
What I would say is I appreciate everyone coming out and speaking their mind and giving the, uh, selectmen direction to go with this. Um, I am concerned about the plains, um, but I do wanna see it utilized. I don't wanna see it destroyed. I go back to Envision Kingston, everything else. People wanna see foot traffic. People wanna see people enjoying the plains. People want to see people enjoying the plains. We're trying to invite small businesses, but if people don't know small businesses around the plains or anything else, or have foot traffic to promote it, you know, I see this as a win-win situation, and I'll agree with, everything has already been said, but Phil said it eloquently. It's getting harder and harder to do stuff for not pro, not nonprofit, and this is something that's a win for everyone involved, I think, and I would support it.
How about a motion?
At this point, I will make a motion to approve it for the vintage bazaar. The exact date was?
October 5th and October 6th.
October 5th and 6th.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Congratulations.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody, for coming, and I appreciate it.
That'll conclude the, uh, public hearing on the vintage bazaar. Next on the agenda, Mr. Russman.
Thank you. I'll, I'll be brief. The House Bill 365 is coming up for veto override. I left a letter with Susan. Hopefully, you guys would all sign on to wait to send out to the reps. The, the bill passed like 268 to 98 bipartisan bill, and then it got vetoed. The, the, Representative Welch voted for the bill, and Joe Guthrie in the past, he was not there that day, but he voted for the bill as part of that. The, the other three did vote against it. I, I, I think that a letter from you will carry some weight, really, for them to override this. This is one of the few economic opportunities for the landfill that Kingston has got, and we know that there are people interested in coming in, putting a utility size type thing. I mean, you're not talking a small thing, you're talking something that would actually have, you know, it'd be a big, it'd be a big deal. We might be able to negotiate municipal buildings to get electricity from it, selling it back. We get property taxes to give some property tax relief to the taxpayers. I mean, it's a goo, it's, it's like making lemonade out of lemons here with the landfill, because right now, we, you know, you'll never do anything with it. So, without, you know, going on into great detail, I mean, I know one of the representatives said something, "Well, it's going to cost, raise costs." Well, this is not rocket science. If, if you put a gas station on every corner, the prices aren't going to go up, they're going to go down. So competition is good. I mean, it's, it's free market, it's, it's supply and demand, and clearly, this is an opportunity for the town to cash in potentially. And we, we know that there are outside groups from Massachusetts and other places, as well as local companies, that are interested in doing something at the landfill if this were to pass. And so hopefully, this will spur our representatives to, to support the town and support the taxpayers and vote to override. So, I'd answer any questions if the harmony is pretty straightforward.
Okay. Why, why did the governor veto it?
Well, I'll tell you, tell you why. This, this, this bill was passed immediately after the-
Just pull the mic a little closer.
This, is that, I'm sorry. This bill was passed immediately after the death penalty bill veto was overridden, is vetoed by one vote. The governor was pretty angry about that. He went to the Republican Caucus and said, "This is not about House Bill 365. This is not about the content of that bill. This is about me as the governor." And, you know, when I veto that, I don't want anybody, any Republican voting for. Now, I, I, this is the whole problem with democracy and government that's wrong, as far as I'm concerned. We have a, a bill that's passed by 364 to 98. Both Republicans and Democrats saw the value of this bill. And because he was angry about the notion of the death penalty bill being, the veto on that bill was overridden, in other words, two-thirds plus one vote voted to override his veto of the death penalty banning, in other words, we banned the death penalty outside of the fellow that's on death row now, it didn't count for him. It killed Officer Briggs, not Briggs, what's his name up there? Manchester?
Briggs.
Was it Briggs? Yeah, okay. I was going to say, gee, well, sorry about that. Anyway, so, politics got involved with it, and, and the bill was vetoed. So, I, I don't want to get into that, but, because it doesn't affect Kingston. But vetoing it does affect Kingston, because we're a town that has a landfill that we could do something with. So this is an opportunity economically for us to do something, and just, to me, it's kind of a no-brainer.
Okay. Kevin?
And it doesn't mean we have to do anything. If we decide we don't want to, we certainly don't have to, but at least it gives you a chance to do something.
My understanding.
I appreciate you coming in and stating that. I personally would love to see solar panel array there and on the county property. With that being said, okay, I won't speak for the governor, because he's a great speaker on his own. The reason that he vetoed it was because here in New Hampshire, we pay the highest electric bills in the country, and we're forcing the, the electric companies to buy at wholesale co, at retail costs, not wholesale costs. And that's what I will say, we just, we extenuate Northern Pass, we're fighting Granite Bridge, we're doing nothing to help the infrastructure for the electric companies, and this is going to put a cost on them. And to be honest, I'm looking for the taxpayers, and I am tired of paying the highest costs in the country. It's hurting businesses to come in here, because not only they're going to run air conditions in the winter, I mean, the summer, they have to provide heat in the winter, and everything else, and all the, the costs that keep going up and up and up, we're trying to invite business in. But to say that politics is in the air, there's always politics in everything, but there's more to it than that, and it's the cost to the ratepayers. And I, I'll be honest with you, I can't support that letter.
Well, I'll, I'll tell you, the, we, we have, I've had solar panels on the office, and we, we, that is, we don't pay, they don't buy it back at retail, they buy it back at wholesale, because on the weekends, nobody's there at the office. During the week, it's great, because in the sun, daylight, nobody's at the office, we use it. On the weekend, it goes back into the, into the grid, they buy it at wholesale. During the week, we buy it back at retail. So, I, I don't know who's saying that they buy it at retail, but they don't buy it back at retail. It wouldn't make any sense. I mean, it wouldn't, you wouldn't get 268 people voting for that in our legislature and have 98 against it. If, if that were the case, if the, if the utilities were actually going to be retail for, for what's, what they're going to, how are they going to sell it back and make any money? It can't be done, so...
Well, they're not going to sell it back at wholesale, that's for sure.
Pardon?
I said, they're definitely not selling it back at wholesale.
Exactly. They'll buy it at wholesale, and they'll sell it back to the, to the ratepayer at a retail price, okay? But it gives us the opportunity to tax that infrastructure, it gives us the opportunity to, to potentially have all the buildings in town. I could tell you that the, the number of towns that supported the legislation when it came up for a vote was, I mean, it goes from, all the way from Alton, Barrington, Bedford, Bow, Crystal, Goldbrook, Concord, Conway, Denver, Derry, Dover, it goes on and on, Hanover, Henneker, Popkin, Laconia, Manchester, Nashua, Osiphe, I mean, Rochester. All these towns supported that legislation, because they're all interested in that. You know, so...
Okay.
These were all for the net metering, increasing the net metering bill from, from one megawatt to five, so it certainly would help to benefit our town.
All righty.
Leave it to what you guys want to do, but-
Thank you.
Sure.
Well, we might as well discuss this letter. Did, who, did you, who authored the letter, Susan? This is from Rick. Okay, here's what the letter says. Susan has transferred it to Board of Selectmen. Letterhead, Mr. Russman is asking us to endorse this and, and send it to our representatives. It reads, "Dear Representative, in a few weeks, you will again have the opportunity to vote in support of House Bill 365, which would increase the net metering energy limits from meg, one megawatt to five megawatt by voting to override Governor Sununu's veto of the bill. As you know, House Bill 365 was passed by a bipartisan majority, 254 to 98. This is our second request to the full block of representatives to the town of Kingston to support this important initiative. This policy would provide our town with the opportunity to use our closed landfill to generate electricity and much-needed tax revenue. Additionally, this policy would not raise rates on any, on other utility customers. This policy is not about the governor or partisanship, but about supporting our community and your constituents. We will be watching this vote closely and strongly urge you to support an override of the governor's veto of House Bill 365 and allow Kingston to pursue an important economic development opportunity. Sincerely, Kingston Selectmen." Anybody want to make a motion? For discussion purposes?
Make a motion to sign the letter.
Okay. Does anybody second it?
Second.
Okay, second. Discussion.
I don't believe this second paragraph where it says, "would not raise rates on other utility customers." I would highly say that, that's not an accurate statement, and that's speculative at best.
I would not be in favor of this, because there are two gentlemen here who are read in on the issues, and they have strong disagreements about what the intent is. I think, my personal opinion is, as the select board, we should be weighing in on things that don't affect Kingston on, you know, we've sent letters for DOT issues, things like that, but I think wading into a political debate on something that I don't have enough knowledge on to put, fix my signature to it and stating policy, things like that, I would not be in favor of that. It's not that I'm not in favor of the landfill becoming a money generator or anything like that, but without more due diligence on it, I wouldn't feel comfortable signing a letter like that.
Don?
Happy with signing. I believe, I believe it would be great for the town. I think it would help save money for the town. I think it's a great location to put it, so I'm in favor of signing that letter.
Richard?
I made the motion to sign it.
And, and based on what? Anything you want to expound on?
Well, I can, I agree with the fact that it's a great place for a solar panel. I've known Mr. Russman for thirty-something years, personally and business, and although I hate to admit that, and, uh, I, you know, would hope that he would steer us in the right direction.
We actually, I'm sorry.
Kevin?
We, we actually, I actually brought someone to the town two or three years ago, and we researched this. I brought a company in that was interested in coming here, and the reason why they didn't come, correct me if I'm mistaken, was because they could only do a one megawatt, and it wasn't big enough. And we spoke to the schools to see how much money we'd save them, we looked at the whole thing, and, and the company that came in, I think they were out of Connecticut or wherever they were from, I forgot now, but they said if they ever go to a five megawatt, it will certainly make a difference to the town of Kingston.
And, and I think at the town, you had to, you had to consume the amount you generated.
That's right.
There was no provision for the utility companies to have to buy back the excess, I think is what the issue was. Kevin?
What I would urge my fellow selectmen to think about is, no one's throwing the baby out with the bathwater. What the issue is, the governor's saying there is flaws in this bill. He's trying to give it back to the legislature to fix those flaws. Everyone wants this, okay? Everyone wants to generate, it's clean, there's nothing wrong with, especially when you have a landfill with, there's nothing else you can do on. What the governor is asking is to fix the bill. There is problems in the bill, okay? And all you're doing is allowing the problems to continue. Allow the legislature to do their job and fix the issues, and everyone, it will happen.
Can you speak to that at all?
Yeah, the only thing I can tell you is, this thing went through the Senate. It passed by a large bipartisan majority in the Senate, and then in the House, it was 254 to 98. Now, I don't think 254 people would have been duped and actually vote to actually raise rates on the people in New Hampshire. I mean, I, I, I just, it, it, it's not the case. I mean, it, 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 uh-
We just had a meeting earlier where they lowered the PFOA levels, and it's going to adversely affect the entire state.
Well, that was the DES.
They let it happen, I'm just saying, I don't-
Supported by ten representatives.
I don't, I don't think the legislature's omnipotent and just can, you know, know, know what they don't know. I mean-
I, I, I would, I hear what you're saying, but I think, again, the, the governor had an opportunity to highlight and say, "You know what? I could support this if you do this." And he's given the, the legislature an opportunity. If it overrides, it overrides. If it doesn't override, it goes back to the drawing board, and they can fix it. The governor does support it, he just doesn't support it, what they're paying the, uh, forcing on to the, to the electric companies.
I would be the first to agree that New Hampshire pays some of the highest rates in, in the country, but competition is, is good for New Hampshire, it's, it's good for the economy. And, and to think that, that if you make more capacity available, it's going to actually increase rates, it, like I say, if you put a gas station every corner, I, I don't think gasoline prices are going to go up, they're going to go down, because everybody's got supply. And, and so, if this, if you have an oversupply, the, the, the price is going to go down, it's certainly not going to go up. But, I mean, like I say, it, it, to me, it, it, it's relatively straightforward, and, and I think the bill is solid, because like I say, the, the Senate passed, and I want to say it was like 18 to six or even more than that, and, and the, the, you see, the House is, it's a pretty sizable majority. I mean, it's not two-thirds, but it's a pretty sizable majority, 250, better than two to one, that people that were there, listening to the arguments, supported it. So, anyway, and, and I'm not making, I don't, this is, I don't get anything out of this myself, obviously. I think it's just a great op, I mean, I serve on the Budget Committee, we're paying over $30,000 a year for, for energy costs in this town, but be that as it may.
Okay. I guess my position on it is, we, we do have a 30-acre landfill in town, that, at least, given the current technologies that we have, there is relatively, other than a potential place for a sizable solar field, which would, this would permit. I, I don't see any other potential use of that property. I, I think it has the ability to, to financially benefit the community. We're always talking about trying to get good, clean businesses in the community, and it's always seems to be a trade-off with the amount of services those businesses are going to require, either police, fire, EMS. I don't, I, I kind of see this as, as something that would be, it's got very little, like, potential use of services.
Yes.
So, it'd be like a business that has, that generates revenue for the town, that has no customers and no traffic and, and all those things. So based on that, I, I think it, it would be beneficial to the town for us to have the opportunity to at least look at putting in a, a potential field at that location. Okay, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of sending this, authorizing the chairman to sign this letter encouraging our representatives to support this House Bill 365 and, and raise the limits from one megawatt to five megawatt solar systems in New Hampshire, signified by saying I-
Aye.
I opposed?
I'll be opposed, but if I get point of order, I don't think it was, it was for the Kingston Selectmen to sign it, and I think it should have the Kingston Selectmen's name, and those that want to sign it should sign it, not the, not the chairman. And I would ask that the letter has everyone's name on it, and those that want to sign it have the right to sign it.
Okay.
We had a similar letter once, and you wanted the names not to appear, because everyone wasn't familiar.
wasn't familiar, however you wanted it.
Okay, well, that's upon of order, um, do, do you want to reconsider your motion or do you want to...
Well, I, I made the motion to sign the letter, so I think you change the wording on it a little bit to be the chair.
Okay, I, the only reason I said that is because, I mean, there's a position, one spot to sign this. In, in a lot of documents, the board votes on whether or not to authorize the, the chair to sign on behalf. How, how do you want to proceed? Don?
I have no problem with you signing, I might be out.
Rich?
You can sign on my behalf or I'll sign at either one. I have no problem with signing either one.
Kevin?
I, I, I don't feel it should be...
I agree, Kevin.
Why don't we sign it as individuals then?
Okay. So, can you redo the letter? Did you vote though? Abstentions?
We only got to...
I, I guess, uh, no, I think we went to opposed, I mean, Kevin spoke, opposed and point of order.
I am opposed.
You are opposed, okay.
So, we're going to go to, just going to change it so you can all sign right outside?
That's fine.
Hey, thank you very much, appreciate it.
You. Lisa Coppolis, next on the agenda.
Hi.
How are you doing?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Um, I'm Lisa Coppolis and this is my daughter, Rhea Wyatt, and, um, I sent a letter, um, to you requesting that my, um, parcels of land be unmerged. I would like that to happen, um, for the sole purpose of my daughter wanting to build a house on that piece of property. Um, I've done a tremendous amount of research, I've looked at the deeds that go back to the original subdivision, um, there was a woman named Ruth Ellis that was a land baroness, um, she owned all fifty-seven parcels of the land that, um, extends from the plains all the way to Danville, um, and at one time that was all, um, became a, uh, an approved subdivision. And on that original subdivision, um, my property at Five Parsons Way and, um, the lot behind me was part of that original subdivision. What I have, um, found out is that at some point in time, um, the zoning changed in town and if you are a single land owner that owned more than one parcel, um, and that that second parcel of land did not meet the new zoning requirements, um, that the town merged them involuntarily. And this RSA six seven four thirty-nine double A was adopted to protect the rights of the landowner and that we can request that the land be, um, unmerged. There is no record of any voluntary merger. Um, I know I haven't done it, um, I spoke with, um, a family member of the previous, um, owner of my house, um, they don't believe that, that they merged the property, um, so essentially what the law says is the burden of proof is now on you, um, and I'm just requesting that the lots can be unmerged so that Rhea and my son-in-law can build a house. We had, um, scheduled a test pit with, um, Peter Landry, um, I've been working with the builder already and, um...
Can you move the mic closer?
I'm sorry?
Move the mic a little closer.
Oh, sorry, um, um, we had a test pit scheduled and the health department put a hold on it the night before stating that they just wanted more evidence of a voluntary or involuntary merger and that just is what brought us to send the letter to the selectmen to, to continue that, to find out what actually occurred because we can't find anywhere in the registry of deeds through the, the county, um, and our, and our paperwork here within the town, so that's why we wrote the letter.
How long have you owned the property?
I've lived there almost thirty years in March.
Thirty years. And how many tax bills do you receive?
One.
So, you, you've been for the past thirty years getting built for one lot of land?
Apparently yes. I never received two separate tax bills.
What's that?
I have never received two separate tax bills. If you look at the deed, and I have a copy of my deed, um, I think you do as well, but my deed and all the pre-existing deeds, um, clearly state two separate lots with the boundaries listed on them.
How big is lot fourteen and fifteen?
So, my, my house is on lot fourteen and it is smaller than lot fifteen.
But how many acres is lot fourteen?
So, the entire, the entire parcel is one point two.
One point what?
I'm sorry?
One point what?
One point two. So, my house is built on the smaller of the two properties. So, this would be a grandfathered issue.
Would it support septic and well and all that?
That's what we're trying to get.
That's what we're trying to find out.
The test pit would tell us if it can support septic.
So, your home is located on lot fourteen?
Yes.
Okay. How about your well and septic system?
My septic is on, I believe they're both on my property, yes. My septic's in the front of the house.
Septic's in the front of the house?
Yeah.
And the well?
The well's in the back of the house.
So, you have frontage on Clark Road?
It, it's Parsons Way now. When nine-one-one came in, they changed, they, they changed the name to Parsons.
Was that, was it...
It was because...
Normally Whipple Springs?
So, yes. Whipple Spring, um...
That's now Parsons?
No.
No.
Clark Road, what?
A portion of Clark Road is now Parsons Way.
So, fourteen, is it on a corner?
Yeah, of Whipple Spring and Parsons.
Of Whipple Spring and Parsons?
Yeah.
And so you, you're saying fifteen has frontage on Whipple Spring?
Yes.
So, depending where the driveway would be is what the address would be?
It'd be Whipple Spring, most likely, because it's pretty far down where, where Parsons Way is.
See, the address has to be, Glenn, the address now has to be where your frontage is, right?
No, where the driveway is.
Don't know the answer to that, that's fine, I'm putting you on the spot.
Well, we give the nine-one-one addresses to where the driveway is and where fire and police are going to enter, so that's the address we, then I go out and look at every home, so if, if your driveway is on a certain road, that's going to be your address based upon the nine-one-one requirement. Is that something different, Glenn, for town ordinances or regulations?
We can, we can check that because that's not really a point in this anyway. Um, but just so I'm understanding, right now your total lot is one point two acres, non-conforming, and you're trying to divide it again and have two non-conforming lots.
If that's how you want to word it.
To go back to your frontage question, I mean, yes, where the, the, uh, where the lot determines frontage determines the address of the property and usually that's also where the driveway is.
And most of the time that's the only place for driveway, the only frontage, I mean, except for the corner lots.
I can tell the board that at one forty-four Main Street years ago, we had three lots there, two of them were owned by Ruth Ellis and the front lot was Doctor, remember the name of the doctor, Glenn, it doesn't matter, I guess, and so my family purchased those three lots and the town likewise combined them back in, when I was young, a long time ago.
Had we had any?
Yeah, it was scary.
So, there was a similar, Mark, I think you're aware, this was brought before the selectmen on Toppin Road, it was the same situation where there were three lots and the owner, um, requested that they be unmerged and you granted that.
I think, I think they, I think the town did it years ago based upon an ordinance, if I'm not mistaken. Was that true or a regulation? I can't remember to be honest with you.
Well, I think there may, may have, well, I think there was a, an ordinance, but I, I mean, we don't have any documentation showing that that's what merged these lots. We don't have any documentation that shows that it didn't, but we don't have any that does. Is that correct, Susan?
So, therefore, based upon the burden of proof, what you indicated...
Yes.
Was the burden of proof is on us to prove why we merged it, is that correct, my understanding?
That's what the law states.
I'm sorry?
That, that's what the law states, that the burden of proof is on the municipality.
So, if that being the case, then I would make a motion that we unmerge them.
The only issue I have is, I mean, thirty years you've been taxed on one lot and now you want to, you know, and we have this happen, we, I've seen it happen a lot of times where, and I'm not saying this is your case, but people will come in and say, oh, I, I can't, I can't build on that lot, I, I want it to be deemed unbuildable, okay? So, it gets deemed unbuildable because they don't want to pay the taxes on it and then twenty years goes by and all of a sudden it's like, uh, I want to build a house on that lot, so, uh, it should be buildable. That, that's the whole situation, I mean, that, that's the issue I have is that, I mean, it's been thirty years, the property hasn't been taxed a, as a, two buildable lots and, and now you want to derive the benefit of it, but you didn't have the, you didn't carry the, the burden of the cost for that thirty years.
I'm not trying to make a quick buck on this, I'm doing it for my kids.
Well, and I understand that, I can appreciate what you're trying to do, but it sets a dangerous precedent for the town. If anyone wants to take a, um, non-conforming lot and put a tiny house or what, you know, whatever it might be, that's what I look at, they're two non-conforming lots that you're trying to unmo- merge that were, you know, made it at least somewhat conforming and they're already sharing radiuses and everything else. And if you do it, what happens down the road when you sell or your daughter sells or your boat sells, the town is left with non-conforming lots.
Susan, do we have...
I think the property will still be valued quite high, a very nice home and they're planning on building a very nice home and the town will benefit because now there will be two tax bills, so they'll be essentially making money.
Right, to close, I would say that we, I mean, we didn't, you didn't find any information, right?
No, I went back through all the deeds and would say, I mean, it went from the original large lot and then it was sold with those two together a couple of times. It was, I don't see where they were ever on their own deeds, fourteen and fifteen. They went from being together fourteen, fifteen to lot forty-three, I think it is now. So, I don't know when, if it was merged, it seems like they were moved together, but they show as lot fourteen and fifteen because that was the original, um, Ruth Ellis's land. So, I couldn't find anything either way, but...
The, um, three lots that were separated earlier was that brought to the selectmen? The ones that were on, um, what road is that?
Oh, I think that was, um...
Lane Carter, but, but...
Uh...
It's about, like, two years ago?
Toppin, Toppin Road.
Is it Toppin? It used to be McQuenches, McQuenches?
Yeah, Jim, Jim McQuenches.
It was also, it was on, um, it was also done, um, um, had a chance of, I don't know, it was, it was happened two years, two or three years ago.
So, I mean, this statue is pretty clear to read, municipalities were required to post a notice by January one, two thousand and twelve. Any public place informing residents that involuntary merged lots may be restored to pre-merger status upon the owner's request. The notice must remain posted until December thirty-one, two thousand and sixteen. The deadline for a request on unmerger, in addition to the notice, must be published in an annual report for two thousand and eleven through two thousand and fifteen. If you can't find record of that, then we're not complying with the law, so therefore...
I do have record of it, I made a copy, I think it was your two thousand and fifteen town...
Only.
Yeah, and it's page two of your town, I, I printed it, so we did do that.
It had to be posted, must be in the annual town reports for two thousand and eleven through two thousand and fifteen, so you found one here, is that correct?
I found it online, I, yeah, yeah, I just was able to search.
So, therefore, we, we aren't in compliance with the statute, so therefore I go with my original motion that we allow the, uh, to be unmerged. We're not complying with the statute, then I would, I would make that motion that we unmerge that lot.
If your well is determined to be on that other lot, are you going to move it if, if you were granted that?
So, if the well is on the other lot, I've been told that it really isn't that big of a deal, um, you can create a variance in the deed and oftentimes homes share one well, so that really isn't a big concern.
So, you, you wouldn't move it?
Probably not.
Try to get a variance?
Yeah.
Susan, did you see this note on the side of this one lot layout taken from plan provided for by our Merrill? Lots are combined as one lot of record prior to nineteen sixty-six.
Yeah, I did and I wasn't sure what to do, but that's, I can define it, the deeds at that point, it just, it's still ready to see. The, the house being on one lot and the owner also shows merger values, you wanted to go, um, I don't know that if you decide you let them be merged, maybe they're going to be out of it, but that shows that they were merged voluntarily.
What's that?
They were merged voluntarily by putting the double across the line.
Did you talk to our assessor about it at all?
No.
Okay.
I don't think the well has a lot to do with it because my neighbor's well was on my property of my old address. I just had an easement that they could service it and, and, um... It's pretty clear if it was not in the two thousand and eleven through two thousand and fifteen town report, as this law indicates, annual reports, we're not in compliance with the law.
Well, that, that would be if it was an involuntary merger. Did you see this print here?
I did.
The note on the side?
Yeah.
Lot layout taken from plan provided for by our Merrill. Lots are combined as one lots of record prior to nineteen sixty-seven. So, I'm not sure if that, if, if that's talking about this or if that's talking about this land over here.
Right, that's, we've gone over that in many, many conversations and there, you can speculate that writing on there in many different ways.
Just clarification, if we say it's okay to merge the lots, I mean, separate the lots, it still has to go through the process with the planning board and prove that they can do the septic and all that, right? We're just taking the first step.
Not if there are lots of, not if there are lots of record, you know?
But they'd still have to prove that they could pass a septic system and all that for the lots.
Well, they'd have to be a design done.
Prior.
Have you had a, have you had a septic design done?
That's what brought us here. We were supposed to have the test pit with Peter Broderick.
You already had a design done, right?
No, that, the test pit was gonna create a design.
Okay.
See, my points, I'd rather see that it got approved for a septic before we, because we separate them and then it won't take a septic.
Right, and that's what we were hoping.
Ideally, that's what we were hoping, that we would come away with that permission to do that.
Then you're gonna end up in worse case than you are now because you're gonna be paying taxes on two lots instead of one.
Exactly. Yes, thank you.
And may have an unbuildable lot.
Exactly.
I amend my motion.
Then you, you'd have a request for a merger.
I'll give a second on Don's motion.
Or we amend the motion.
What's your motion there, Mr. Briggs?
To, to allow it to be unmerged based upon the approval of the septic system. How's that? I like that better. And we've done it several, I mean, we've done several in the past and one not been more than two years ago.
I'll second. Is that what you're looking for?
Well, I thought Phil was second.
I thought we were having a discussion about a second on the motion.
Oh, okay. Any other discussion?
Do we feel that this has been researched fully? Susan?
Um, it was there or researched. I've kind of been to the underlying personally. Um, maybe the assessor could help us out. I went through the registry with the deeds all the way back and I didn't, um, I couldn't find any odd, odd moment where something happened, so.
I mean, you got a building permit application for nineteen eighty. Lot fourteen, fifteen, Clark Road.
That, yeah, we put.
Was, was that for the home?
Yeah, we took the roof off and went up with.
Well, that was before you owning it, right?
Oh, sorry.
Nineteen eighty?
It was, the home was built in nineteen eighty-three, so I would assume that.
Yeah, this is, uh, Lois Merrill.
Yep, the previous owner.
Any relation, Lynn?
I mean, I can think of one other property that is a business property that splits a lot. And the planning board looks at it as one lot. That's John's truck and auto. It's got a dividing line right down the middle at any time. And it's considered they're getting, I don't know if they're getting two tax bills or not.
Okay, any other discussion on the motion? Second.
I'm trying to drink from a fire hose here. I looked at this briefly, but wasn't able to. I guess my question is, what's the typical course of action for something like this, as it has been done before?
Um. Well, she would, she would have to have the deeds, uh, recorded. Have probably have a new deed drawn up and, and recorded for both locations.
That's why I thought it might have to go to the planning board is for it to be signed off on, to be recorded.
I don't think that happened the last.
Lynn's saying no, so.
Last time.
Okay.
I don't think so. The reason being that if, uh, if, if you all determine that, that this was involuntarily merged and now you're reversing that, uh, it goes back to.
Your original description.
Essentially pre-existing lots. So, no, it is what it is at that point.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of unmerging these two lots, provided it, it can support a well and, uh, dis- uh, disposal system signified by saying aye.
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 opposed?
Opposed.
Abstentions. Okay, so you're gonna have to have a test pit done and witnessed, um, you're gonna have to have a system designed and submit it to the health officer and the state for approval. And if you can get that, then, um, we will unmerge the lot.
Thank you.
Okay.
I think I need to stand for us to prove it.
Probably somewhere to sign, so that's likely to prove it.
Yeah.
Fire station building committee, project update.
Committee of Warren.
How's it going, Mark?
Good, no worries. Just wanted to come in tonight and, uh, give you a little bit of an update. Um, I think at this point our project is gaining a lot of momentum and a lot's gonna happen over the next four months. And I think it's important that we keep the board and the public as well, um, up to date. So I, I think you're, you're probably all aware that last week the planning board approved the lot line adjustment, to allow us to create the expanded lot for, at, at one forty-six.
Six.
Lincoln Street for the location of the fire station, um, which is good news. And, um, that was one of the last, last things we needed to get in place in order to have the closing, which is now scheduled for October seventh. Uh, last week our design subcommittee meeting, subcommittee met with, um, SMP Architecture up in Concord. And, um, we're, working hard with SMP to, um, refine the concept of the building. And we gave them a lot of input. They were, they were actually very pleased with the amount of input that we gave them. And then we also spent some time talking about the, uh, construction manager selection process. Um, that's moving along. The, um, request for proposals has gone out. They're due back in, um, next week on the third and the following week on the ninth. Uh, the design subcommittee will be having interviews with, we're expecting responses from the four firms that have been, uh, that the requests went out to. Uh, we would invite the board of selectmen to join us in those interviews. Um, it's gonna be pretty much of a day-long process, starting at noon time on September ninth at the fire station. And, um, the interview part of that process will be an open meeting. We, the only part that might be in non-public is deliberation for us to, uh, make a recommendation. You know, come up with a recommendation that we will hopefully make to the board of selectmen at the meeting after that, which would be on the sixteenth. And, um, looking at the timeline that, uh, SMP put together and recommended to us, um, we really need that. We need you to really act on that, that evening if possible, uh, because that really gives us about two months to, um, get that construction management firm onboard, up to speed, and putting the budget together so that we can create the Warren article, um, before, before Christmas, really. There'll be three, three major pieces to what we get back from the construction management proposals. There'll be a fee for that work that I just described that will take us from, um, up to the vote. There'll be a fee for work that would be required to support taking it the next step after a successful vote, until the project actually starts. And then the third major piece of the fee is, is based on a percentage of the project to manage it from that point to, to completion. And, um.
What percent, what's the average percentage? Do you know?
That I don't.
Okay.
We'll move that with discuss.
I think it was.
I know that the, the fee for the architectural firms is, is a pretty, it falls in a pretty standard range. I don't recall off the top of my head if the, if the fee does for the construction managers.
Okay.
So we're, we're projecting that the conceptual budget would be complete by mid-November, um, as long as all those other things fall into place. So the timeframe, I think, is, is very important. You know, we lost a little bit of time, you know, getting things lined up for the, the purchases and sales. So, uh, we still feel as though we can get this, get this put together, um, before the end of the year, but, um, we don't have a lot of time to waste. Um, the other thing that I wanted to just mention briefly was, um, I had put on the, in the request when I made the request with Susan about, um, committee appointments. And I found out, uh, that the one vacancy we've had for a while has been filled and I appreciate that. Um, we do have a vacancy obviously occurring with, uh, Chief Seaman. And I wanted to hear your input on, um, on that. Um, also, um, due to scheduling, it's been difficult for Mr. St. James to attend some of our meetings. So I, I'm wondering if you would be considering, um, an alternate? We had one last year when, um, when George Corn was, was traveling. And then the other thing that I'd like to put out more to the public is we're also losing our recording secretary. Sandy Seaman has been our recording secretary for the last year and a half and she's done a great job. And, uh, we'd be welcoming a member of the public to step up and help out in that role. And then the, um, the final thing that I wanted to mention is, um, we would like to throw out the idea of scheduling a work session for sometime not at the very end of that, um, mid-November timeframe, but maybe like halfway in between, when we have a little bit more meat to the project and we could have a, a work session maybe with the board and invite some of the other, uh, boards. I know we received some input from the Historic District Commission that they would like some input. That would be an opportunity for folks to learn a little bit more about the details of the project and give our committee and our professional advisors some, some direction on some things that we still have decisions to make about. That's pretty much what we had for this evening. That's a lot of information. If you have any questions.
I'm sorry, were you looking for two or three more, uh, people on the committee? Is that what I understood?
No, we're really just.
You're replacing?
We just wanna be sure that we have, um, people, the seats that are already there are filled. So we'll have a vacancy occurring when, when, when Bill retires. And, you know, Kevin said, had schedule issues, so if we could have a, you know, somebody else from the board of selectmen attending, that would be, that would be great. We've had a, we had one meeting recently where, uh, we struggled to get a quorum, just the middle of the summer, and that's, you know, that does happen.
What I would say is whoever is acting chief would fill in that spot for Bill, I would think, would be the appropriate thing. I, I would agree with that. And as far as recording secretary, we could either see if someone would volunteer to do it or one of the members of the committee, I would think, hopefully could do that.
Does anybody wanna volunteer for a, uh, an alternate when Kevin doesn't, uh, can't make it to the meeting?
What, what night is it?
We typically meet on Wednesday nights and what we're, what we're trying to do is have the main committee meet once a month. And as long as the subcommittees are meeting in between, then the work is getting done. And, you know, we're not trying to schedule lots of meetings for the main committee.
So you're looking for the, a main committee person to, to, I'll fill in for Kevin when he's not there, if you want, unless somebody else chooses to do it. I, I wait now to have three meetings, so I don't have to go need another. Okay, Mark? And I'll fill in for Kevin when he's not there.
All yours.
This Wednesday at six o'clock, they're meeting.
Are you not going to that one?
No, I, I reached out to him. I, I only work two days a week, but for some reason every Wednesday they pick, they, I'm not getting a, hey, we're gonna meet, so I get to.
So this Wednesday at six P M?
Working out, right?
Yeah.
This Wed- this Wednesday at six P M?
No problem.
Six o'clock.
Rest assured, I'll be there with bells on.
And happy birthday. To Mark.
Why's his birthday?
Yeah, it's his birthday.
Have to spend my anniversary with the planning board and.
There you go. It ain't been that.
So the idea of the, of the work session, is that something that you're open to?
Do you have a, you have a date? Any idea? You said sometime in November, you were saying?
Uh, it would probably be October, we would be more ready for it. And we don't wanna wait till we're too far into that.
Yeah, sure.
Budget development process so that we can be able to use the input we get from that meeting.
All right, just, I, I, I'm sure we can work something out if you just give us some reasonable notice.
Okay.
Be good if you, you wanna come up with a date. Um, is days, days, evenings make a difference?
Not to me. Most afternoons I can do. Whatever works best.
You're getting docked by then, Phil. You should be all set. Yeah, I, I mean, late afternoon, maybe? Does that work or you were looking for an evening meeting?
No, we could probably do something late afternoon. Is that something that people's gonna be involved with?
I don't think so. Okay.
I wasn't at the meeting last week.
So just let us know.
Okay.
Any questions, though, Maxie? Any questions for mine?
No, I haven't.
Great.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, uh, Bresdehan Storage Facility project. Charlie Zilch and Joe Bresdehan.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, my name is Joe McKittrick. I'm an attorney from Northampton, New Hampshire.
Hold that a little closer.
Usually my voice is loud enough so they can hear me by way of that. My name is Joe McKittrick from Northampton, New Hampshire. I'm an attorney representing Bres- Mr. Bresdehan. I could give just a very brief overview. It's my understanding, this is a project that's been going on sometime and it's in the construction phase. And on Friday, Mr. Bresdehan was notified verbally, but not in writing, that, uh, there would be no more permits issued for this project. The problem with that is, uh, construction was scheduled. In fact, on to this today, three of the five structures, the, the pots, the materials for them were delivered and a crew had been hired to, uh, to erect these. Uh, so we had no prior notice that there was anything in wrong, nothing in writing. Um, and what we're here to, tonight to do is make sure that we can continue the project and iron out any difficulties that the town may have with this project. And I think, uh, either Charlie or Joe can answer any specific questions you might have.
Can I give you a little timeline, please? So we started cutting trees on this project on April second. That week, Mike Sanborn and he had hired Fred LeClaire to cut the trees on April second. On July tenth, he had a meeting with Dennis Quintal about the areas that were overcut, which I knew nothing about. I was never notified on one part of this.
Well, you had a plan from the planning board that delineated the areas not to be cut?
Yes.
And so you knew nothing about it? What do you mean, you knew nothing about it?
I didn't know any of the areas were overcut. And on July tenth, Dennis Quintal had a meeting out there with Mike Sanborn, the excavator, on Wednesday, July tenth, that he was concerned about an area that was overcut, which was a Wednesday. He told Mike, if he brought in wood chips and pine saplings planted, he'd look it over and see what he thought. On Friday, July twelfth, all this work was done. Dennis showed up and verbally accepted all the work that he had done. On Friday afternoon around four o'clock, as I was riding by, is when I learned that any of this even happened. Never knew one thing about it. On August sixth. On August sixth, there was another site visit by Dennis Quintal, and that's when he had a report done, on August sixth. But between, uh, April second and August sixth, there was multiple inspections done by Dennis Quintal. That I was charged for, and he took out of the bond, out of the, uh, account, which is fine. I still have not received one report on any of that, that came, which is fine. On August ninth, permit was issued for the house. All impact fees have been calculated on the house and the five buildings. And thank God for your building inspector. Guy's been unbelievable, wonderful to me. On August thirteenth, four days later, I showed up to the town with a check for twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars for the impact fee. So I didn't have to pay it right away, but whenever he gives me something, I pay it or answer or correct the situation, whatever problem is. On August sixteenth, I found out there was a problem with the site plan from Charlie. First I know, August sixteenth. All my buildings have been ordered, everything's prepped, everything's ready to go. That's August sixteen. August twentieth, planning board has a meeting. I knew nothing about it. No one invited me, no one asked me, no one said anything. I watched it Sunday night, and there's a lot of that that I don't really agree with, but I watched it Sunday night, and, um, didn't make me too happy, anyway. On August twenty-second, the building inspector informs me that there's no more permits to be issued. I think that was last Thursday or, anyway, August twenty-second in the afternoon. The twenty-third, the next day, my buildings are scheduled to be here. They're all coming from Wisconsin, already en route. Every truck driver's called me to confirm address, date, time, everything. So I called the erector, I says, we got a problem. I don't even have a permit, I can't put the buildings up.
So this is the steel buildings, not the, not the, the wood structure, right?
The wood structure's up. These are steel buildings. So the building inspector told me, he said, bring the buildings in, they're en route, bring them in, but you cannot erect them until he recommended this, this, tonight. So all the buildings, three out of the five buildings arrived today, they're all there. I got nine guys standing around doing nothing, and, uh, I don't know, I just haven't- And Dennis, actually, on the, on the meeting, he said, he would have notified me, but he didn't know how to get in touch with me, and he didn't know my email address. He didn't meet.
Sure.
So can you walk, walk the board through, because I'm a little confused myself? I got a number of emails on, on trees and Unitil and the state, and, and I think that's important. So maybe from the back to the beginning, at what point, I know Fred Leclerc went in there and had cut?
Fred Leclerc started on April second, cutting the general site.
Okay.
It's got nothing to do with the trees on one twenty-five.
That doesn't?
That, this problem here.
Okay.
These are overcutting, overcutting the limit into the-
So that, the trees on one twenty-five are separate from this incident?
Right.
Okay.
And I try, I wanted to think, are all the trees on one twenty-five? I was told no, okay? Um, couldn't do it, had to be buffing. Okay, so we left the trees on. As you know, one tree came down and, on a Friday afternoon, and-
What's the power?
Since then, the power company's had an arborist out there, their own, the state's had their arborist out there, I had an arborist go out there, and Mike Sanborn, the excavator, went out there. I heard on the planning board tape the other night that the reason the trees are falling down is because everything's undermined. All three of those people, and, and Mike Sanborn, the fourth person, said, that's absolutely not the case, has nothing to do with it. All the trees that were cleared, now these trees aren't protected, there's no root system because it's all sand, total sand, there's no root system, and that's why the trees should come down. Since then, the state arborist and Unitil's arborist have gone out there and flagged seventy-one trees that they want down.
That's, that's where all the ribbons are on, yeah?
Yeah, seventy-one trees. They want to leave three trees.
And why's that?
Because they say they're not safe, they're not safe there. Because of the shallow root system where it's all sand. So they recommend they all come down. Of course, they want me to pay for it, and now we're at the point where they think, when they redo their budgets this year, they'll put it in their budget and take them down.
That's on the state property?
Correct.
So, if I might, um, Charlie Zilch from S C C. When Joe started his project, or before he started the project, we had a pre-construction meeting, we established bond, uh, with this, with this group here back in, that was March or April. And one of our first tasks was to flag out the limits of the clearing on the site, and as you know, the site is entirely wooded. So the manner in which we did that was by, like I said, flagging it. So we tied ribbons to trees, colored ribbons, in one consecutive line all the way around, uh, to the limit of clearing. And we showed the woodcutter that was the limit of clearing, and so when he went-
I assume the property line was clearly delineated, right? Along the whole property?
Not the whole property, just the areas that would be close to the cutting. We delineated.
Just areas that were gonna be cutting trees?
Yeah, we just did, we basically, um, flagged the limit of all the clearing that you would need to do to construct the project as per the approved plan.
Okay.
And so we did that, like I said, the method was to tie ribbons to trees, colored flagging. So when the woodcutter came in, um, my thought is he was gonna go up to those flags and stop, but he didn't, he went beyond that. So there was no way to just visually verify that he stayed within the limits of the clearing.
Well, you didn't have the trees with the ribbons anymore, right?
They were gone.
Okay, so that, that tells you right there that he exceeded it.
They at least went to that point and maybe beyond. So the next time, I think it was in, you mentioned July, when Dennis was out there on one of his inspections and suspected there was some areas that were overcut, we went back out. Now this time, we staked it, there's obviously no trees to hang flags on, so we staked it, and then that's where it became obvious there wasn't overcut in some areas. Some of the wetland buffer areas and perhaps even, uh, one of the property lines.
Got a map right here. All the stuff in pink is where you overcut.
Okay. Where did that come from?
From Dennis Quintal.
And you, so you see the, where the five foundations are? And all that behind it right there?
This is from your site plan.
Yeah. So I'm, well, I'm looking at the highlighted area there that you're showing.
The highlighted area is where you took down trees.
Right, I'm saying that whole bottom part of that highlighted area was the part that Dennis, they restored, and Dennis accepted. On, on Wednesday, he had a problem with it, on Friday, he accepted and said, that's good, Mike, you did a good job. Friday afternoon at four o'clock, when I'm driving by, is when I found anything about this, knew not, nothing about it.
I mean, to correct your timeline, it was August eighth when the building inspector was notified of this, that no more permits would be issued, and he stated he was speaking to you that afternoon, and I followed up with him, he said he, he did speak to you or something.
Last Wednesday, the building inspector called me and told me this. That's the first I heard of it. Last Wednesday in North End of Mass.
Your wife?
What's that?
I believe he spoke to your wife.
He did, but he didn't answer anything about the building for me. He said, he said, phase one and phase two is fine, there'll be nothing issued for phase three. I'm not even into phase three. Absolutely what was said. And she's right here to verify that for you. And as far as you on the tape the other night saying how it's all undermined, that's the reason, you got three arborists, and you get an excavator who doesn't-
Hey, I'm going off of what the town's tree warden stated, and that's Rich St. Hilaire.
And actually, the, and the town tree warden, through email, sent back saying, this is not a Mr. Bresdehan's problem. He has done nothing to create this problem, it's all on the state. You own the trees, you own it. That's an email, I have that in writing.
And I do believe I stated that in the planning board meeting, that it was the state's-
All I heard you say was, it's all coming down because everything's undermined, and they're in a pissing contest. I'm not in the pissing contest, it's between, it's between the state right now, nothing to do with me. They've accepted it. Here I am, I'm coming to this town, I gave you thirty thousand dollar impact fee, I'll give you huge taxes, I'm trying to do things right, and I'm trying to do business in this town to promote it-
Well, it's, it's an eyesore right now.
And I got you, and I got you undermining me and doing business.
It's an eyesore right now, and people are very concerned that it looks like a gravel pit out there, because so many trees were taken down.
You're saying, so y'all saying-
I speak, please.
Yeah, what's that?
We had, I sat through all these meetings for the site plan, okay?
Right.
I'm the selectmen's representative to the planning board.
Correct.
I sat through all these, as far as I'm concerned, this is a contract, you said you wouldn't be cutting these areas, and they were cut, and-
I'm a mover, I move furniture. I hired the, the biggest profession-
Yeah, but you're, you're responsible for the people who are working for you.
Correct. That's why I hired, I hired the best people, local people, to keep the money right here and feed all the local people. I like to keep it here, and then, I mean, you're a hundred percent correct, but I mean, I thought the guy I hired-
Did you get a sizable bond for the people you hired? So that when they do something like this, you, you have the assets to replace it?
I'm hold, uh, do I have a bond? No. Do I have enough money held back? I hope so, I don't know.
Charlie, have you seen this?
I have not, it's the first I saw of it.
He asked for it, but he was told by Dennis Quintal, that's not my job to give you that.
Okay. Well- We'll get it to you.
That's what I said, right?
What he stated was, it is not his job to point out where you're deficient from your site plan.
So, and on this top one here, okay? He's, the, the, the property owners behind, behind me, they've clear cut their property all the way past their boundary into my, in mine, so, so I'm buffering my own property because they've clear cut into mine, which is fine. They said, uh, Dennis said, you might want to have a conversation with them, they're into your property quite a bit.
I was there.
And I said, I'm a good neighbor, I'm not using that land, I'm not worried about it, okay? Out here with a, I just found out there's a horse farm there when I walked out there Sunday night, there's a horse farm there, I see a, a paddock and a fence there. He's completely cleared, hundred percent right to the property line, hundred percent right to the property line, which is fine. So this scrub has already grown back from thirty to sixty inches high of scrub, that whole entire area that you're talking about, this whole area. And I measured it and took pictures Sunday night, went out there. So maybe within a year, it'll be seven feet tall.
So here's the point. Hundred-year-old trees were cut down, but there is a provision in the site plan for how it's restored.
Uh-huh.
And right now, we are in the tree planting season. You're, you're not the first one to come here and say, oh, I've got buildings showing up, I got guys coming, I've got doing this, and then all of a sudden, it's February, the buildings have been put up, well, I can't plant trees now, I really need my certificate of occupancy permit, though, can you give it to me? Can you give it to me? I'll take care of it in the spring, and then we're left holding the bag. It still looks like a gravel pit, it's not taken care of, and this happens all the time. And how do we recover, how do we get that back?
So the right-hand side of this project, facing it from one twenty-five, the right-hand side of this start of phase three, hundred percent looks like a gravel pit where they're working. There's drainage trunks everywhere, the left-hand side with a five, five foundations in, I'm a hundred percent pleased with that area right now. Landscaping needs to be touched up. Five foundations, the border around it, the driveway, everything.
Well, I'm glad you're happy with it, but we had a plan that we all agreed on, and it doesn't look like that.
Well, if I might, there's clearly a mistake made, and as the chairman pointed out, Mr. Bresdehan is ultimately responsible for the people who work for him doing these things. And that will be his issue with, with them. The issue that we have here, the town has a substantial bond, and, and what we're suggesting is-
Let recue us a substantially reduced bond-
Well, as I understood-
From what is required by the town ordinance, because you came here, you requested that, and we met that request. I'd also like to point out that when you were having trouble with the state trying to get the access off one oh seven, everybody at this table signed a letter in your support.
Because that was the safest route to come off into the project.
But we've tried to help you the whole way. We're not trying to be adversarial here, but we are trying to protect the town's interests to make sure that these things are remediated when they can be.
Well, a- again, if I could finish on that. We have two issues. If, if, if we stop everything and leave it as it is now, it's going to be an eyesore, and, and even remediation is not going to be, and, and a minute, you're not going to replace a hundred-year-old tree with a hundred-year-old tree.
Right, but there's a provision for, Charlie, do you know what the-
So, the immediate problem for him is that he was, he relied on what he thought was, uh, everything going, but he has those, uh, uh, buildings to erect. Uh, you, you have the ultimate, um, weapon, if you will, you have the, an occupancy permit, which he has to ultimately have. Uh, you can also set deadlines for, uh, Charlie and the town getting together and discussing what exactly should be done with remediation. And you still can allow him, uh, to lessen the eyesore by getting those materials, or they're just stacked on, on the property now, getting those materials to be allowed to be erected. I think that's kind of a win-win for both the town. I agree that, that there's a problem, and you may have had problems with other people, but Mr. Bresdehan, as I understood, has given you, um, pictures, or is prepared to give you pictures of other properties built and what they look like. And one is in the town of Raymond, as an example, uh, that apparently the town is very pleased with. He's a person who, who lives in this area, works in this area, has, uh, generations worked in this area, uh, and he wants us to be proud. If we leave it as it is, uh, during, right now, you're going to go through the winter with nothing erected in terms of buildings, and then be unable to erect it during the, during the winter. So our suggestion is, look, you have a bond, if it has to be increased, we can talk about that, but I think it would, the equities of the situation should be that he should be allowed to continue to erect those buildings, and at the same time, direct his engineer to meet with the town to come up with an appropriate, uh, plan of remediation. And that's what we're requesting. I don't think the town loses by that, I think by working together, the town will actually benefit from it.
I have a quick question. So what, what is the plan for remediating what's happened?
What's the provision, Phil? Maybe Glenn can chime in on that.
What is the provision?
It's essentially six-foot trees need to be planted in their place, and, and I, I guess that would be worked out with Dennis on site, you know, what sort of spacing and, but the intent is to make it, never gonna make it whole again, but-
And, 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 I mean, unfortunately, well, I, I think you remember, I spoke about the bond, and I thought it was insufficient. And the reason it's insufficient is because things like this happen, okay? I'm not saying you're doing that, I don't know, but it's very common for people, hey, a hundred-year-old tree, we'll cut that down, and if I gotta put up a six-foot tree, it's gone. I'm not gonna be putting up a fifty-foot tree. Happens all the time. And, and that's why I was in favor of that and unanticipated things like this, having a substantial bond.
So this area is where he cut, I a hundred percent agree. I don't even have any use for the land. I'm not, why he cut out here, I can't answer that. I have no use for that land, none. I will never ever enter that land.
Which piece, which piece are you talking about?
All this, the biggest-
I mean, are you disputing the, the pink there? I mean, it's a, it's a huge area, right?
I agree. Areas I will never ever even go near, none. I don't, I mean, why, I don't know why, I don't know why. I thought I hired the best guy around.
Charlie, maybe you can, were you out on the site?
Just recently.
Okay, so no, who was out there monitoring that he's doing what he's supposed to be doing?
Like I said, we, we flagged it initially, he went and did his cutting, and then we were called back to the site for quite some time till they were restaking. And that, we were staking at that time, buildings and roadways and things like that, we weren't involved with the, uh, the limit of the cut anymore until Dennis asked for that, to be restaked, because he, he was aware there was some issues.
I paid, I paid three times to have that property marked. Same area, three times I paid.
Have we, have we received any complaints or anything from the abuddhas?
The person with the horse farm is not happy that their entire back of their property got opened wide up. You know?
I mean-
That's the only one I-
I'm not saying this facetiously, I mean, but he didn't leave any buffer on his side of the property. He's clear cut right, actually, some of his is overstepping into mine. Well, hey, go move your fence back four feet? Well, hey, go move your fence back four feet? Oh, I don't care, I'm not even going to use that. And I can't even walk through this area right now. I mean, it's just that much scrub grew in the last four months. This this happened in April, we're in September right now. The town engineer's been there how many times and I paid for those inspections?
And I asked Dennis about that, and it was on the, he said, basically, when the foundations were in there, that gave more perspective on where everything was in relation to that, and he sat down and started mapping this out when he.
Those foundations have been in for months, the gravel where the foundations were going, and you can plainly see, you know, it was all outlined, has been in since, hey.
So, I mean, it's, we're not talking about the guy cut maybe a ten feet this way, a little too far. Or twenty feet that way, I mean, this is a huge swath. I I mean, it's got to be at least. Maybe fifteen, twenty percent of the property, fifteen percent maybe?
I don't know, I'm not, and I agree with you, a hundred percent agree with you. And I said, I went there Sunday night, I said, what the hell did he put it out here for? Exactly what I said, I said, you've got to be kidding me. I didn't, tell you the truth, there was so much scrub growing, I said, is this the way it always has been? I got, I will nev, the only, the only thing I can say is, on this one right here, that's all marked, when I walked this property before I bought it, there was a paper road that you could drive a truck through. I walked it with Mr. Merrill, I guess I was here tonight, I walked this property, he fell down right here over a tree that was laying down that I picked him up on. I said, why did we replant this? This was a paper road, it connected with here and over here. Small one went out to the left, this paper road went right across there. So to me, I know Dennis made them put all these stumps back in the ground, they were never there to begin with, you could drive a truck right down there. I got a call from the kid from Alternative Sales, who was involved in the, uh, Stonemobile Club, he said, hey, he said, we had a great trail going through there, we used to drive down that bank and then up the other side, I go, the Vernal Pool? I go, yeah, he goes, we had a trail right through there. I said, you're right. He said, we'd like to continue, you know, that trail because it led us across the street to somewhere else. I said, we'll work it out, you tell me where you need to come, I have no problem, I'm a Stonemobile, we'll get you over there, no problem at all. But I just want, I mean, I don't know if anyone knows this, but there was literally a road you could drive a truck down right through here, before, right through the property.
Well, Route one twenty-five used to go through that property.
Okay, yeah.
So Route one twenty-five came down Church Street, came out of the end of Church Street, right straight across that property. When when the old Route one twenty-five came through Kingston, so that that wide area you're talking about was Route one twenty-five. That went right through the, through the corner of that property, all the way out to to where the landfill is. Then it went down first right into Brentwood and and, uh, Crowley Falls Road was one twenty-five, before they rebuilt one twenty-five in the early sixties. So that that road you're talking about was Route one twenty-five.
I go to work every day and move furniture every day, up and downstairs all around. I hired who I thought, I mean, you're hiring a guy who's been in the tree business, he's eighty-three years old, his son's there, his grandson's there. I mean, and I thought they did a phenomenal job, I mean, in and out, clean as can be, I went there tonight, walked the property.
He cut everything, it wasn't moving.
Oh, we got him, no, right, I'm saying, I went there tonight, I found one coffee cup on the ground, which I picked up, brought it with a dumpster and put in there, I've never seen a speck of trash on that property.
What what I, what I would ask is, you know, you came to us before with the bond, and I think this board, like I said, was sympathetic to your cause, and we didn't see a need for a big bond, and we've been trying to work with you. And I think as far as a businessman, you're a great businessman, your reputation precedes you, this, you hired a person, they didn't do what they were supposed to do. What I would say is, let's start right now and look for the solution. I'm going to go back to the attorney here, and he said, how do we go forward from here? What's the solution that we can all live with? Okay, you're right, we're not going to plant hundred foot trees, okay, but what can we do from this point forward to get your buildings erected, but also to rebuild this buffer, or at least aside, while we're in planting season? Um, and, you know, we're, we can all walk away feeling good about it.
So, which I'm fine with. I'd like to put the, I'd like to have the buildings put up, the five buildings put up. I paid for the, um, you know, impact fee for that square footage, do not give me an occupancy permit until you're happy with the restoration process, what we come up with. I guess that's, I mean, that's what I'm looking for. I put the buildings up, you don't have to give me an occupancy permit, and I got them all on the ground over there right now, I mean, the rest of them will be here shortly.
Your attorney mentioned increasing the bond and and starting to plant trees.
Here's the other thing, I wasn't totally happy with the landscape, I like things, drive up to Raymond, I want them perfect. So I wasn't totally happy, so I called the landscaper who did Raymond, who did Plaster, who did Wolf Bar, who's been all around, he said, you know how busy it is right now? I can't touch anything right now, I'll help you along the way and try to recommend things and help you, but I can't touch anything. I talked to the erector the other day, he goes, if I can't put those buildings up, I don't know when you'll see me. That's okay. I'm, and he's waiting for my call now, whether he's going tomorrow or going elsewhere.
I think one of the things that, selectmen, it, um, might be appropriate is, we don't even know what the remediation is yet. Um, and, uh, Mr. President's suggesting, uh, that he get the building permit, and that I think it would be appropriate for this board to set a deadline uh, for, um, both the town and, uh, Mr. President to come up with a remediation agreement and submit it to this board. I mean, that, and and I agree, you don't, you don't want to wait until February when you can't plant anything. You want to get that done as soon as possible, but there's a a practicality issue here about getting people, A, to erect the buildings, and B, getting people uh, to agree on the remediation and actually put it in place. Uh, that's the problem.
Do we know what the bond balance is? Sixty-four, nine, I believe is what the total is.
I mean, you can't.
What was the original?
So busy out there right now, you can't get anyone to do anything unless you're lining some of them.
What was the original bond supposed to be? No, I mean, before we reduced.
Six hundred thousand.
Yes, six hundred, and we've reduced it to what?
Sixty-four.
Well, then there can't still be sixty-four in there, is there? Or has he replenished it?
Well, that's, all that money's there, the thirty thousand impact fee's there, and there's probably.
How can the whole bond be there?
Another account that Dennis has been dribbling out. I mean, and that's my, that's my thing.
The engineering.
They come out, that's a five thousand dollar engine.
Just, just a quick question on the process, so I'm. So there's a, there's already a plan in place, based upon what was existing, right? So I assume you're going to create another plan, what you're proposing?
Yeah, I think, um, I'd like to have the opportunity to meet with Dennis at the site, and take a look at the areas and see what needs to be restored.
So for that piece of it, which is the problem, is it, would it be, I mean, we have to go look at another site that we need to talk about later? Would it be advisable for the board to do a site walk out there Saturday morning? And look at that other site that that Phil brought up?
Does, so, what's been cut? I mean, what's the buffer length? The requirement is fifty feet, right? Commercial, residential?
On property line, correct?
Vegetative buffer.
So what, what does he have to do?
There's no cut area substantially more than that, right?
There's, there's actually.
What made that a no cut area?
That was the agreed on site plan.
Was it, was it based on, it was just an area that he wasn't going to utilize, or it was?
I, can I answer that?
Sure. That'd be great.
Um, it's a combination of both. There's a buffer around the wetland area and a buffer from property line.
What's the requirement on the Vernal Pool?
It varied, uh, we had an allowance to, um, cut within a hundred feet in some areas, in other areas we were to hold a hundred feet.
So is that what that circle is? Is that the hundred foot radius?
That, yeah, that that circle is roughly a hundred foot radius around the Vernal Pool.
A substantial amount was cut in the Vernal Pool area that shouldn't have been cut, right?
Correct. On the backside.
And is, is that, that, that's a state regulation, isn't it?
That's town.
Town regulation?
Town, uh, town ordinance, I believe, that's the, that falls under the, uh, the wetlands, uh, the wetland joints.
So, it sounds like bottom line is what we need is a plan to put things back tree wise. And probably a price on doing that, to see if the bond covers it.
Well, I I don't think we should diminish the bond because there's still work outside of this.
No, I mean, we need to, we need to have that work covered plus the cost of the tree allowance, or the trees in it, one or the other. So does this need, does this have to go back to the planning board?
No, at this point, at this point, uh, the planning board would be expecting the, uh, the site to be developed per the approved plan. And if there are deviations that are going to be restored, that falls under enforcement, that falls under your purview.
And what's the provision for?
Restoration.
Restoration.
It's in there, there's a layout of trees.
Well, there's, there's, there's a, there's a proposed, uh, there's a proposed diagram, if you go into the regulations, into the site plan review regs. Uh, there's also a, um, a minimum size of plantings, I believe it's six feet, and fifty percent of them are supposed to be conifer and fifty percent, you know, it's a mix of hardwood and softwood so that you get, you know, year round kind of, uh, kind of, uh, coverage. But I've got to tell you that the size of the trees that were taken out of there, I would hope that whatever this board comes to agreement with the applicant that we're, we're granted, putting, replacing hundred year old trees isn't going to happen, we all know that. But I would certainly hope that we'd come to something, uh, in excess of what the minimum is, so something more than six feet, I would certainly hope. And that's, but that's in your hands.
Is it safe to say? The planning board ought to revisit their minimum then.
Well, keep in mind that the.
That's, that's set up, that's set up as no buffer.
That, that buffering is, is, is usually when, uh, a buffer is being created from.
Correct.
An undisturbed area or a, an open area, and it creates that buffer that will then grow. It's a little different situation here where we had mature growth, the plan was proposed that way, it ended up, you know, some of it got taken out. And, uh, and so now, you know, what, what do we do to, uh, to make it right? And, again, I think that it's, uh, it would be appropriate that it be something more than the minimum standard in this particular case.
Do we think the logger had monetary gain from this?
The what?
Going in and cutting those trees, was there?
It depends, it depends what they were. Depends on whether or not it was put through the chipper or the sawmill.
I think he.
Chipper, everything was through the chipper.
Everything gets.
Oh, he does?
Everything was through the chipper.
If that's the case, then it wasn't, then it wasn't probably for financial gain primarily.
He chips it, sends it to the.
Or tree or.
Power plant.
Power plant, right.
Clearly there was lack of attention and, you know, carelessness in in following the flagging, and that, that, that's really too bad that that has happened.
How long would it take you to create a plan with a cost?
Not by expertise, I couldn't answer that truthfully, I don't know.
No, for you to cut, to give.
I think he's asking Charlie.
Yeah. Well, I'm looking at you, I mean, it's ultimately, it's your guy that's going to do it, but.
And all I, all I know is it's pretty hard right now to find, I mean, you're in September, it's pretty hard to.
I, I understand that put it in place, I'm saying to develop a plan and a cost.
I would, I would imagine that we could probably put together something in a couple of weeks.
Hopefully, maybe Dennis will.
But then, okay, so then we're halfway into September, he's got to find a contractor to do it, then we're well into October.
But you could be doing things in parallel, I mean, you could be looking for someone to do the work and developing the plan.
I agree with Mr. Presley, finding anyone to do anything right now is not an easy task.
I mean, I've never been, here we are, the end of August, I'm done for the month of September, I get twenty calls a day as far as Connecticut, I said, can't help you, can't help you, it's unbelievable, never seen like this in my life. It's unbelievable.
I, I get that, I.
That's a huge area to replant, huge.
Oh, yes.
A- a- and and those trees, what's the offset on, like, it's, it's not a lot.
Well, I know, i- i- it's not a lot, but I know that when Dennis addressed the planning board at its last meeting, uh, is, he said that if he were asked his recommendation would be a closer spacing than the regulation requires.
Closer?
Yes.
And what, what's the offset on the regulation, do you know?
I don't have it in front of me, and I, I wouldn't.
I think it varies depending on the trees, but it's, it's.
It's relatively close.
Well.
I, I mean, look how much, look how much.
Typically, that.
Uh, there's could be a lot.
As Glenn stated, if you're installing a buffer to virgin land, as, that would be part of the site plan, there would be a detail in there stating, you know, these are the trees we're going to use, this is the spacing plan. It, it's typically in a site plan that's presented to us when a buffer is used. This was more contingency, so that wasn't specifically spelled out.
And part of the problem is, we have no actual count of the trees that were in this cut period, uh, so we're going to have to estimate as to what's going to be new in there, not.
Well, you, that, that horse has gone left of bond, what was there, i- now it's not, okay, let's replace what's there, number one, we can't in size. So theoretically, if there was a, a tree every twenty square feet, the regulation probably calls for substantially more than that a- as a replacement, because they're so much smaller, a- and and it's not like he cut an extra thirty trees and you're going to have to replace it with thirty trees, there, there's a formula.
Right, but again, we don't know the base, there, there's no count of how many trees were there in this cut area, so I think part of the, uh, agreement with the town would be to come up with something that makes sense in terms of reclamation, and makes sense in terms of, uh, the spirit and intent of, of, uh, creating a buffer zone.
Right, I, I think we need to move this along, we could argue this, but we're arguing on that.
So we're talking about a plan from Charlie, some more one money from you, right? Is that what I'm hearing?
I, I'll make a motion.
Go ahead.
Hopefully I get it how I want it, um, that we go on and, or go on and issue the building permits, we hold the occupancy permits. We get a tree planned by our next meeting, two weeks. And then based on that, we decide what to do with the bond. And if, they say the tree plantings are a hundred thousand dollars, then obviously your sixty thousand dollar bond is useless.
I mean, this.
What, what, can I propose something?
Added?
I think, or add, an addendum to that, it should be for these five specific buildings that we issue building permits for.
Right, that's.
No further building can take place beyond that.
Well, I don't think there's anything, and he said the first phase, so, so.
Well, this is phase two, but.
First two phases, okay.
I'd second that. Okay, uh, I'll throw this out here for, well, we got a second. Okay, so, under discussion. In lieu of waiting for a plan. I, I think it would probably be prudent for the board to attach a monetary value anticipating what it might possibly be if you're going to issue the permits.
You mean a monetary value on the trees?
Yep, and then increase that bond at this point.
I, I kind of agree with that, but my point is, I don't know if we're qualified to make that decision. I don't, I have no idea what you're talking, I mean, I know what trees cost, but there's a lot of them. I think it's going to be more important for him to open up the business and not be able to get an occupancy permit.
A hundred percent.
So I think, I think, I mean, his feet are held to the fire, because he's not going to be able to open until he gets occupancy permits, am I correct? And if, and if the town's going to take that property, I'd much rather see the buildings up than laying there on the ground.
Yeah.
But I think there again, we run into the problem, the timeline, if we're adding another two weeks on this for a plan.
No, I, I agree, but.
Getting outside of that season and then.
And every month I'm not open.
That's my theory.
I understand that, but, I mean.
That's my theory, if he doesn't plant the trees till next April or May, then he's not open.
All right, if that's a stipulation in the agreement issuing the building permit, then fine.
Occupancy permits.
No.
Yeah, yeah, you're right.
This is in writing that we are telling you now, you will not get an occupancy permit until this is established.
That was my motion.
Are, are you okay with that?
That's all I want, I understand that.
You're okay with that?
I'm trying to do, I want, if you, if you, yes, you can give me a.
And your attorney's okay with that?
You can do my five, my permit to do the five buildings, no occupancy permit till.
It's resolved.
Right, 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 resolved.
And then.
I just don't want these buildings sitting on the ground, I don't want to lose an erect, you know, still erectives. I'll lose them tomorrow.
So, the only other outstanding issue is there were one five hundred and one one thousand gallon underground propane tank that were installed without an issued permit. And there was a mechanical permit for the three underground gas lines that has not been paid for yet.
Uh, I was told that Hafner's came down here, and Dave Askin's name is, who did all the other buildings, he came down here. Last I knew, he said the town won three seventy-five or three fifty for the permit, he looked at him, he said, I've done, I've put tanks in every single ton around here, it's usually a buck and a quarter, a tank or something, and that's what they finally agreed upon. Paid, it was inspected, I saw tags on both of them.
It was inspected, but it was not permitted.
Okay, so they inspected it, it was backfill cleaned, I was told Hafner's paid a buck twenty-five.
Why the hell are we inspecting it and stuff that ain't permitted?
It wasn't permitted.
It's a good question.
I was told that being, I was told the town won three hundred something, he said.
That's your new building, that's your punishment inspector.
No, that was the fire department.
It's fire department.
Fire department who inspected without a permit. Fire department who inspected without a permit.
So can you pay that?
So does Mr. Brezlinhan owe the town money?
I know what it is, but I was with Hafner.
Okay, well, if it hadn't been paid, can you pay the three seventy-five or whatever we're.
I think they agreed on about twenty-five each or something, whatever they, whatever they agreed upon, yes.
Three seventy-five for three tanks, but whatever it is, can you take care of that?
That's the least of my problems.
The answer is yes, he will.
So reiterate, he can get the permit to build, you're gonna do the permit, we're gonna look at what the cost of putting the trees are. And you won't, you won't see an occupancy permit until, until those are planted.
Correct.
Am I correct?
But, but the, is it the intent that once we get an idea for a remediation plan to increase the bond or?
Let's, that's his motion.
Yes.
See where we're at, I think we should have.
I can't see how it would not be increased, but.
You'll have to see.
I'm not running away from anything, I mean, that's why I'm here. I have no idea, especially this out here, when I went there, but I will tell you, the scrub, when you, if you're gonna visit something Saturday, you'll have a hard time walking through it.
The board didn't vote to do that, so I don't.
But, I mean, that's why we have Dennis and that's why we.
Yeah.
I think Dennis and probably can work it out.
Okay, so the motion is to what?
Motion is to issue the building permits, no occupancy permits until all the trees are planted. In two weeks, we will have a tree planting plan and an estimated cost.
Dad.
And then decide what to do on the bond.
Okay.
What was the thing you said, Dad, oh, and it only affects phase one and two. No permits for any other.
I second that.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? I'm gonna understand. Okay.
Can I say one thing?
Sure.
So, I apologize for the communication error, that that didn't get to you on the eighth, but I did not wanna issue, and I didn't wanna have the inspectors issue a cease and desist or, as was mentioned, revoking a site plan because of this. I mean, so, the communication may not have been perfect, but there was a method behind that because we weren't trying to jam you up. We wanted you to continue to be able to operate on the permits that you had already pulled, we weren't trying to give you, you know, to, to shut you down. But, I, I just want you to know that this is, a lot of people are very unhappy with how that looks. The amount of trees that were taken down and, and it's a big source spot for people in Kingston, that's, and I'm just letting you know that, and as a business owner coming into town, it's probably not the best optics for you from the get-go.
When that phase one and two is done, that initial side, I agree, that side to the right looks like a gravel pit, hundred percent correct. The area I'm working in phase one and two, you'll be proud. Matter of fact, before I came here, I just went to a house in Kingston, older people, the realtor who's here is representing them, and he said, I wish your climate control was done so I could go store there. Where will you store my contents? I said either Raymond Plaza or Haven, and he said, okay. Now, that was before I came here.
You, you know what goes a long way? Is the town getting a phone call from you saying, Jesus, I just got down here and my logger clear cut this thing, what do you wanna do? Instead of us having to create an enforcement action when we find it, that goes a long way.
And like I said, I went there this past summer, I just found out last Thursday afternoon, really, on the open, I, I have no idea when I, till Sunday night when I look at this.
Mr. Chairman, you're right.
I mean, when you, when you drove in there, you don't see all the trees are gone?
You're right, you're right, it would have been done better.
Yeah, I see they're all gone, but I don't know where the women are cut, I don't, that's why I hired Charlie, I mean, he's.
Charlie, you going on the site?
I, the, uh, my field crew came back and said they think that was overcut. But they didn't give me any, they did not let me know to, to what extent in the back, you know?
I mean, what benefit do I gain from this being cut? I, I don't have.
Please to fall on your middle buildings.
The other maintenance room paid.
Yeah, yeah, I mean.
I mean, I will say, I mean, I go by, like, it was like three weeks ago and your landscape was all dead, I preceded everything, hand laying down the, the hay, I was impressed with that aspect. Because it's still in mid-construction.
But normally, to me, a commercial facility backed up to residential, you don't usually see the residents, that's the purpose of the buffer. And that's why it's fifty feet. You don't, you, alls we can see is your property, not the residents, I mean, that's not the case.
I, I agree with you, out and back there where you look through, I mean, like I said, there's a horse corral paddy, I can't, I see a, a big top, a horse corral, I can't see his house. That I, I, you know, I mean, it's, it's, it's a long ways out there, that, there's eighteen acres there, it's, it's, it's a big, you know. I appreciate your time, thank you very much.
Right, thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Hey, permission to keep this copy?
Sure.
Another one? I don't say, just this one.
Another one? Mr. Newt.
I might walk in on Sa- Saturday. I'll take one.
You want one?
I'll take one.
Yes. We've got one, you pulled it.
No, I gave it to him.
Oh, you gave yours?
Hey.
Yep. Hey Charlie, there's a list, did you give him the whole packet?
He got the whole packet.
There's a list of all the permits in there, comments on the side. Get that packet, so, just, so he has that. You got the whole thing, yeah. No, you can keep it, I'm just saying.
Like, keep all that?
Yeah, it's just for your knowledge.
Okay, appreciate it, sir.
Okay, now that everybody's gone, we're gonna open it up for public comment.
Who would the people, who would the people have at?
Public comment opportunity. You got three minutes.
No, I mean.
I'll just say, as I was just saying to Glenn, I went on the site walk, um, I, I, I'm Evy Nathan from Conservation. I went on the site walk when we did that site walk before it was approved. And Charlie assured us that, uh, you weren't even gonna be able to see the complex from one twenty-five. They were gonna leave so mu, they were gonna leave such a buffer. So, then within a matter of probably two or three days, the place was clear cut. I mean, it was like too late, I sent, uh, or I called, emailed Dennis and said, um, you know, check the vernal pools, I don't even see any, any sign of any trees there. He went and, I, I think there was at that point a problem with one vernal pool. But vernal pools always get the maximum buffer, which is a hundred, um, so automatically, that's, they can't get less than that unless there's some sort of waiver. But anyway, I just wanted to say that at the site walk, we were told that it was going to be, you weren't even gonna be able to see the, the buildings from one twenty-five. So if you take somebody at their word, uh, you know, how do you stop something like this from happening, I don't even know. You can't, you can't go out and inventory every tree.
A- and we don't have the resources as a town to be, I mean, we have an engineer who comes and visits and, and catches most things, but we're seriously behind the eight ball, like you said, we have to take someone at their word that, what they committed to in the site plan, as far as I see it, it's a contract between us and them and, and this is a violation of.
That's right, I mean, we can't have somebody there every day, and yet I feel he's saying, well, they were old trees and they were gonna fall and they were dangerous, well, am I, are we supposed to go out there and check all that out to make sure? I have the feeling that they cut them all so that the place has great visibility from one twenty-five, that's my opinion.
And you get a very large bond.
Yep.
Yep.
So, anyway, that's my comment. Thank you for being on top of it tonight anyway.
Okay. Any other public comment? Hearing none. Jack's towing.
He's getting a lot of calls from someone who wants to know how come he can operate his business already, she's aware that we've been waiting for, well, he doesn't have a business occupancy permit, he hasn't come in. There's been a letter to him, which I copied to you from Glenn Greenwood, and then we were asked to call him, he did, nobody's heard it.
Where's the line?
Okay, has he, was he served in here? What's that?
Found Richard Burrow's.
I think it was just a mailed letter, right, this letter didn't serve it.
The lady that called, the police station, it was a lady that called the other day, she was less than happy.
I should point out, she's a blastout resident.
Well, they, are they oper, operate without a business occupancy permit?
There are, yes, and there are numerous issues there, I, did you speak to him when we talked the other day or?
No, I was waiting to see, I knew you went there, so I didn't wanna go there again, so.
Yeah, I didn't.
So I would recommend we do a, if they don't have a business occupancy permit, has someone spoken to them though?
I don't know, I, I was under the impression.
They're going on.
I'll, I'll go pay a visit tomorrow, I'll pay him a visit.
Well, we wanna, you're talking Glenn or Jack?
Jack.
I think we should probably touch base with Glenn first.
Glenn Greenwood.
To see what action he's taking, if any.
Did he send a letter out, you know?
I, I don't know, that's, uh.
I'll check with Glenn then.
Unregistered vehicles, it's a, it's a used car lot, isn't it?
Well, he tucks some cars out behind there, it's a mess.
There's cars, there's restaurant equipment, there's boats, there's.
He's not in compliance with the site plan, he's got, he's got more cars there and stuff there than the lot will hold.
We got a site plan on that site, do you know?
I don't know which site you're talking about.
It's, um.
Old Ladies Rockingham Auto down on, um, one twenty-five.
Along the right, left.
Little old, little old, it used to be Little Old Ladies.
Yes, we do have a site plan.
Okay.
So do you, do you allow Glenn Greenwood to go out onto the site with like me?
The planning board often will, will authorize him to go and check a site for compliance and so.
So why don't, why don't you see if you can give him authority and I'll pick him up and we'll go down, pick a plan, we'll see what's out of compliance and talk to the guy.
Okay, um, I mean, norm, normally this would be a vote of the planning board, so, uh, and, but, but we're not gonna be meeting for a while now.
So I'll go down and see him, then.
But report back.
If I recall correctly, the planning board did already authorize Glenn to do this.
This one specifically?
Yes.
Okay.
Because there were numerous concerns brought up about.
Oh, okay.
Volume of.
Oh, oh.
And I mean, next Tuesday.
Oh. Oh, well, then he's alr, okay, then, then.
Next first Tuesday.
How about if I, uh, contact Glenn and have him get in touch with you? And you guys will schedule a time to go?
We'll go down and pay him a visit.
You, would you prefer him to contact you?
Yeah, you could.
Okay.
At his convenience, yeah.
Okay, I'll do that.
We'll go pay a visit, see what's going on there, see if we can get a rectify.
Okay. New business, committee liaison reports. Do we have any committee liaison reports?
Well, I think most of the dirty laundry from the planning board has just been aired, so, uh.
Um, the only thing I'd say, that would be good if, uh, Chief Briggs can substitute, but to be honest with you, I got an email last week saying it's a meeting Wednesday at six o'clock. I never got a, hey, what are your, what's your availability for a meeting? Um, and it is disturbing that, you know, I mean, I, I have missed two meetings because they pick meetings.
I'm not complaining, you know.
Yeah, I get a week's notice, but.
Trying to bill you out.
I appreciate that.
If you don't want me to go, say.
No, it's good that, someone should go.
I'm always willing to help out the fire department, I, I follow.
I've heard that.
I, should I bring up the, uh, milfoil thing again?
Sure.
The Conservation Department Commission was approached by the people who write that warrant article every year. And they wanted to roll it into the budget instead of writing a warrant article. That was a recommendation of possibly the state, is what they made it sound like, they will still go for the matching funds. And I told them, I said, if you do that, you're gonna lose total control over it, because that group has control over it now, not the town. And they didn't care. Their only request was, is that they wanted the balance go into a trust fund. So if there was an outbreak that they needed more money than they get each year, that they had the balance there to take care of it.
How long has that been on the ballot?
Three years, I think's what they thought, three or four, they said.
Why, would, would it be better, I, I know, like, on the budget committee, um, if a social service. If the town votes it three years in a row, it's deemed that the town supports it.
It's kind of the.
So why, why not put that in a selectmen's line item versus the conservation?
It's always gone into the conservation's budget. And that's kinda what they were saying, was that it rolls into conservation, but they really have no control over it, it's just a place they put it. And I talked to Cindy and I said, can this be done to where it's, you know, a balance carried over and all that? She said, yes, that we just have to be very, very careful about it written.
Well, I agree, the DRA could help that, but I'm just saying, if, if your concern is they lose total control over it.
No, those people lose control because.
Yeah, I understand that.
Okay.
So if, if the resolve is just put a selectmen's, then, you know, they're not gonna lose per se.
Right.
Right. Other than that, I would agree, the, the voters that support it three years in a row.
It's not the conservation loses it.
It's the, it's the milfoil people, the, the lake associations.
Right, the lake association. Because most part of that is for Newton.
Yeah.
Which was another issue, but they said they'll figure out a way to come up with the amount and the exact amount of the budget, but.
I mean, I'll be honest, if the.
I'm not supporting her.
I think, I think I'd like the past precedent of, if the town tends to support it three years in a row, we take that position and, and make it easier, because it does get obnoxious if they sit there and vote each thing individually. I'd be in a favor of it, I don't know if one else did.
It's been more than three years, hasn't it?
I think it has been more than three years.
They, well, they thought at least three or four. I, I mean, I didn't research it to see how far.
What did Dan Parks say?
So if this is gonna be a trust fund, would, if, if there was an outbreak, it would have to be released by the trustees of the trust fund?
You know, that's what I thought, Cindy said no, said it can go in there and be part of the selectmen's authority to spend.
Agents to expand.
Agents to expand, so it doesn't have to be watched by the trustees.
And then also on the liaison, the budget committee is not met at all. Um, I know one person expressed an interest in being a chair. Um, I know the current, the acting chair is not interested in doing it, there are a lot of vacancies, I, I'm just asking for input from the board, I think I can steer to call a meeting, but I, I think before we start appointing people, at least the people on the committee should get a look at who's in there, I would re, maybe even send something out again, now that people are back from summer, saying anyone interested in serving on this. Then they can look through the pool of candidates and make a recommendation.
Can you get them to call a meeting soon and have?
I think.
Like an organizational meeting or something like that?
Organizational meeting, so they can see what really need to do.
How working, making that happen for September? Actually, we do have to have one anyways, because it's coming into.
Is Dan Parks' thing in the correspondence folder? Is that the one he's talking about, coming out to one twenty-five with a exit on to one twenty-five?
Dan Parks is delivering.
Right here. Some memo here. Says, uh. Planning board received a call from Dan Parks letting the board know that there may be a change in plans as his new contractor, Mr. Samborn, did not like the idea of a road bond. Road bond. He is proposing a temporary cut onto Route one twenty-five to avoid this. After discussion with Mr. Greenwood, Mr. Parks was notified that if there was an approval from DOT for this proposal, he would need to come back to the planning board to amend the memorandum of agreement that clearly requires a road bond and have it signed by all three parties. Mr. Parks, planning board, and board of selectmen.
Just did that.
Name for.
Just what?
That was the same, um, person that we just, was, the name was mentioned for.
So wait, when we spent four meetings discussing this ad nauseam and setting up all these rules and everything, they just changed their mind the next week and go against it?
You're shocking me, Rich. Well, I'm gonna go with that one first, I mean, we were just talking about the contractor has a problem, but I think exactly that, we went through this ad nauseam to come up with a memorandum.
What did you just say?
What?
What did you just say?
I was being sarcastic, given our previous discussion where people just do the site plan and then, I don't like that anymore, I wanna change it.
So, on the letter of dumping.
Wasn't picking on you, Rich.
Anvil Road.
Yeah, sure.
So, we were set up to go to the planning board, made all the plans, gave it to them on time, and they forgot to put us on the agenda, so.
You're talking about John's truck and all that?
Yeah, so I would ask Glenn when they could squeeze me in again.
And he's gonna say, call Ellen.
But what are you talking about, Chief?
John's truck and all that.
So putting the dumpsters there.
Oh.
So.
Pick up.
He put me on the agenda, but forgot to list me on the agenda, so I made all the plans, got all those people ready to go, and, uh, talked to all the neighbors and all that, then I realized that Glenn had forgot to put me on the, on the agenda, so I canceled everybody. So, so if you could tell me kinda when we could go again, that would be helpful, so I can notify John Struckin Auto and all that. I'm looking, and the reason why it reminded me of that, it says, there's a letter from a residence on Danville Road requesting no dumping signs.
Well, here's the letter. "To whom it may concern, my name is Brooks Clark, my wife and I own the property of twenty Danville Road. We've had a few instances with, where trash and refuse has been dumped in front of our property on the corner of Kelly Road around the utility pole. There has been two occasions where I hauled and paid to the dump the trash. This past week, we caught our neighbor from the other corner of Kelly Road dumping trash in front of our property. We kindly asked that he not dump anything in front of our house anymore. His feelings must have been hurt for getting caught because he got aggressive with us. We backed away to let cooler heads prevail. He did not, he did remove the trash after we walked away. I've already filled out a report with the Kingston Police to cover my basis. I'm writing to you to request that a no dumping sign with a penalty posted be installed on the utility pole in front of our home or in close proximity to the pole."
Just a keep out sign will work just as good.
I gotta be, I mean, we, there's plenty of dump spots, the corner of Phoenix and Ball Road, people dump.
Fairgrounds.
Yeah, fair, there's, there's ton, we can't just keep, I mean, I would think once you find a person, that the person should be fined.
So.
F I N D and F I N E D?
I would say.
Signs typically don't work, they just tear them down.
E D.
They usually go down there at night, they go.
So, is it the consensus of the board that we will not install a sign?
Well, whose property is it? You can't put it on someone else's property.
Well, they wanna put it on the utility pole, which you can't put it on anywhere.
Can't do that either.
Can't do that.
Be installed on the utility pole in front of our home or in close proximity to the pole.
I said, you'd be putting no dumping signs everywhere in town, I mean, I, I deal with them.
They don't work, people just dump at night or tear down the sign.
Yeah, they don't care.
Like no hunting signs, people's.
So, can you send them a letter that the, we will not be, uh, posting any signs, um, because, number one, they're not effective?
So, I will ask the police department to do an increased patrol when they drive by there to make notice.
What's that? And the matter has been referred to Kingston Police.
I'll ask them to, I'll ask them.
What's that?
Gonna be driving by and checking.
Glenn's got your answer.
Good.
We're getting to talk to you.
Okay, so, the lawsuit, uh, that's been turned over to Sumner?
Yes, Susan sent that to Sumner.
Thought she was gonna come in.
They asked that they take it back and put somebody else's name on it.
That's been forwarded to Sumner, right, Susan?
Yes, to Sumner and Primex.
Okay.
And Primex, they will cover it. But they, that was a few muddy areas they were working on, but they're talking directly.
Can I see it?
The lawsuit?
Yeah.
Show them the other one, don't show them the first one.
Are they giving out free flyer miles at the courthouse now? Cause this person certainly likes going down.
Who's named on that one? Supposed to be the chairman gets named in the lawsuit.
Couldn't find him.
It's not the guy they can find.
Hey, it's Junior anyways, tell him.
Okay, we'll take Glenn, so we can give you your answer.
So, Don, you can be on the planning board, and it would be the next chance, it'd be October fifteenth, we have to make sure everything's in by September twelfth.
You should have.
So, that, so that was the question, I didn't see the submittal, but you're saying that everything was in?
Yeah, I, I went down that day and made twelve sets of plans.
Okay.
And I did it on behalf of the town, seeing if we're gonna truly put the town.
Right, so, did, did you also, did they also do a butter notices?
I couldn't say, I don't, I really don't know. I, cause I called Glenn, uh, that evening early, and I realized that we weren't on the agenda, so I had people come, and I said, are we still on? He said, oh man, he apologized, it was a mistake, no big deal. It was, I'm not upset over it, it was an honest mistake, Ellen was out on vacation, and Glenn had a lot going.
Right.
On the, on this, Susan, on the registration, you gotta let her know that.
I just wanted to get, see if I get another date.
You're gonna let the person know or just tell me?
That would be the date?
Let the person know.
You wanna check it, be affirmed?
You should go right to Ellen.
Board, uh, did reconsider it and haven't changed our position.
Just make sure she's got everything. And ask to, you know, for it to be put on that date.
Okay, thank you.
October fifteen is the date of the hearing. September twelve is the deadline to make sure everything's in.
October fifteenth at what time?
Well, we start the meeting at six forty-five, and we don't assign specific times, so that in case hearings or people drop out for continuances, we can just take the next one, we don't have to wait, we don't have to be galling time.
I, I didn't see that. No, I don't.
And I don't know what the agenda looks like for that date at this point, Don.
Okay.
There might not be much on it, so, if you talk to them now, you might be able to.
Sure.
Get, get in early.
Have we rescheduled the meeting with, uh, Attorney, uh, Watson?
No, I, I haven't, um, tried to reach him again, and I'm reading the I would hear from him, because it is a family, it is what it is, so I can, I can send him a message.
Maybe that's this.
I wouldn't read that, Mark.
Thanks, Glenn.
Sure.
Well, it's ten o'clock, you know what that means?
Technical memo from Trustlow.
Why even should be in bed?
I should be.
Are you one of those per diem guys?
Say it again?
Are you one of those per diem guys?
No.
So, this is, uh, updated from Trustlow on, uh, this must be on the, um. Assisted living?
Safe we can go?
We think.
See, everybody get.
We know your phone number.
Yeah, I sent out a packet.
Okay, any questions on it, Trustlow?
No.
Uh, did you get the letter from LaFave?
Yeah, I don't understand, it's keeping us informed, but I don't think it has anything to do with us.
Well, they want us to.
Yeah, he sent that to me, asking for a response, and I'm, I'm like, I'll bring it to the board and see what.
I think we've been far too involved in that whole process already.
He's got a, he's got, there's, there's legal issues that we can't step in, and then there's a, there's a bonding issue.
Whatever, I didn't wanna respond until the board.
Oh, and that house that doesn't have a building permit, that's a small issue too.
Yeah, well, I would say, we, I, I don't know if we, just a quick response, saying, though the board is sympathetic to your cause, until the legal issues have been resolved and proper bonding, there's nothing this board can do. Proper bonding is established, there is nothing this board can do. It's a planning board issue and a legal issue.
Sure. You got the email address right?
Right, does that make sense?
I certainly didn't wanna answer it without the board.
Is the email sufficient?
I would say so. Yeah, I would, I mean, it's coming from the town of Kingston, this is what the board recommended, I inform you. If he asks a letter from that point on, I mean, I think he's, what I read out of the letter, the email rather, he's looking for something to take to court with him.
Well, they're not, they're not gonna be able to get a building permit until phase two is in.
Right, that's, that's it, the road is built. Well, we can't help them because it's a legal issue, we can't pick one side over the other, and then the second thing is, we can't issue a building permit until the, it's bonded.
Not just bonded, the road has to be built.
Well, I think we did say, as long as they put the bond money for phase two.
Okay, well, that's not what the ordinance says. The ordinance says, no building permits are supposed to be issued unless it's built, the subgrade and the remainder bonded.
But if they don't get a building permit and just build the building, what do we do then?
We don't issue them the occupancy permit, apparently.
I'm saying, the whole thing is, yeah, it's, the, the reason the bond option was put out there is because there's already a house where the road is supposed to be, so.
We don't issue the permit to let them finish it.
My, my neighborhood, they bonded the road, waited two years, and then put the bind on. That's what Rich wants.
No, but the road has to be constructed first, that's just the top coat.
Oh, you're talking, you're talking about the next phase.
Yeah, the road has to be put in.
Right.
And then the top coat is where, the drainage is supposed to be in, and the.
Yeah, and the bind.
The, the boundaries are supposed to be in, the, and then.
Yeah, you have to finish phase one and bond phase two.
What's that?
He would have to finish phase one.
You're right there, Adam.
And, and bond for phase two. In order to move forward.
You didn't fall over, you fell asleep.
Okay. Uh, we have, uh, let me see. Did you get a, the copy from Marty?
Yeah. We can go non-public to talk about all that.
Okay. Forest Fire Warden appointment? You wanna have him come in?
Who's that?
Richard Fowler.
Um, let's.
That is, talk about that in public, interesting, you know.
Okay.
It's a little different.
Note from H D C to Planning, would like to be involved with fire stations.
Actually, I think, um, Mark, height, Mark, um.
Notices.
Furland, uh, uh, alluded to that, that he'd like to start involving. He mentioned that in his talk tonight.
We got a, a notice from the town of Londonderry on the, uh, cell tower. As a, it's gotta be an area impact thing.
How's that affect us?
Pretty far away.
They have to do a certain radius, because you might be thinking of building one, and it wouldn't make sense if it's too close, so it's not.
Love one of one eleven, takes you in dead spot.
I think you're halfway to Londonderry, maybe this one'll work for you.
All right, I think that covers, uh, anything else? Couple non-public issues?
Yeah.
Anything else on the board?
No.
Okay, that'll conclude the televised portion of our meeting, we'll be adjourning to non-public session, thank you for watching. Good night.